I'd like to call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, September 4th, 2024. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Zulik?
Here.
Rallo?
Here.
Rupp? Pete Monsmith?
Here.
Stossberg?
Here.
Asari?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Daley?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will move on to our land and labor acknowledgment. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people. And we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. All right, to summarize today's agenda, yes, Councilmember Stossberg?
I would like to move that we modify our agenda tonight. I'd like to amend it to include a discussion of the mayor's budget proposal, which would include a period of public comment related to the discussion of the budget, and I'd like to insert that after item number eight, the additional period of general public comment, and this would make this item number nine on our agenda.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to amend our agenda as given. Is there any, are there any questions?
Just a clarifying question.
Yes.
So does that mean that members of the public cannot comment on things related to the budget outside of that time of, of public comment during the budget discussion?
No, since we are amending the agenda tonight, and it was, there was not an advance notice given, I would allow comments on the budget during the open, but, open comment portion as well. All right. Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, do we need two-thirds for this?
No, under, sorry.
Simple majority.
Under local code, you just need a majority vote to transact business outside of the usual agenda order.
Okay, very good. Well, then I'll ask Clerk Bolden to call the roll.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Monsmith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion to amend our agenda passes eight-zero. So after the second period of open public comment, we will move to a discussion of the mayor's budget proposal. So to summarize the rest of our agenda, we will have approval of minutes, then we will move to reports from council members, which includes a letter of support for our community, for a community leadership grant project by the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County. Then we will move to reports from the mayor and city offices, and we use that term loosely because we will have a report from the Capital Improvement Board from our representative, Doug Bruce, about the Convention Center expansion. Then we will have reports from council committees, if there are any, and then we will move to the first item of, the first period of public comment on items not on the agenda or on the budget. Then we will move to appointments to boards and commissions, if we have any. We will go into first readings, where we have ordinance 2024-17 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendment and updates related to grading permits and alignment with Title 13 related to steep slopes. We will then move to appropriation ordinance 2024-03, just for first reading, to additional, additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for personnel. Then appropriation ordinance 2024-04 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for debris removal. Then we will move to legislation for second readings and resolutions, where we have Resolution 2024-17 requesting the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission to make a recommendation for expenditure of food and beverage tax revenues. Then we will have a additional period of open public comment, and then we will move into a discussion of the mayor's budget proposal. Then we will discuss any matters of council schedule and adjourn. So let's move to approval of minutes.
I would like to move to approve the minutes listed from February 28th, 2024.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about those minutes? Seeing none, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Monsmith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
Those minutes are approved. We will next move to reports from council members, and I will start with Councilmember Daley. Do you have a report this evening?
I do, yes, thank you very much. I just wanted to acknowledge that September is Suicide, National Suicide Prevention Month, and I wanted to just bring that to everybody's attention. All month, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, allies, and community members unite to promote suicide prevention awareness. Sorry. I'm not going to be able to carry on with more than what I thought I was going to say. So call or text the Suicide Crisis Lifeline, 988. If you are struggling or need information on how to help a loved one, sorry, but thanks.
Thank you, and that was 988 for that crisis line. Councilmember Asari?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg?
No report, thank you.
I'll go to those on Zoom. Councilmember Rosenbarger, do you have a report?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No, no report this evening, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo, do you have a report?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Zulik?
Yes, just a quick one. On September 12th, over Zoom, I will be hosting a constituent meeting specifically focused on the Convention Center and the progress the Convention Center construction is making along with the Capital Improvements Board, which is the body that handles all things Convention Center related. CIB President John Whitehart will be graciously co-hosting with me. The first 20 minutes will be a presentation, including all the information on what the Convention Center is, what the expansion of the Convention Center is meant to do, and then there will be a 40-minute question-answer period where President Whitehart and I will be answering any questions that anyone might have. So we'd love for everyone to come hang out with us, thanks.
Thank you. And my report this evening stems from my participation in the Steering Committee of the Community Foundation of Bloomington and Monroe County's efforts to have a plan for addressing homelessness and finding funding to do that. They are applying for a grant through the Lilly Foundation, a Giving Indiana Funds for Tomorrow, GIFT, grant. And basically, they are seeking a letter of support from the council, which is in your packets. And just, let me just read a little bit from the grant proposal executive summary. So, "We propose a five-year path to building a better solution to housing insecurity. Central to this solution is a team of skilled professionals who will be responsible for, one, diverting households from experiencing homelessness; two, housing individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness; three, creating individualized case conferencing teams through diverse community partnerships; and four, providing intensive case management to housing insecure households for a period of up to three years." So this is a letter of support to go with their grant application, which is due Friday. I'm open to any questions or comments from colleagues, and then I'd like to make a motion to approve the letter. Any comments?
Councilmember Rallo?
I have a question. I appreciate the letter very much. There's a table of the Unsheltered Homeless Count, Region 10, Monroe County, over through the years of 2019 to 2024, and I'm finding those numbers low. Could you, do you have any comments about that?
I do not. I, I am not one of those who created this grant application document. The, it may be that it doesn't include the May count, the additional point-in-time count that was done in May, I'm not sure.
Okay. In any case, it's a, it's, it's a well-composed letter, and I appreciate it, I'll support it, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve the letter of support?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to issue this letter of support for the grant proposal. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Pete Monsmith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will get that signed and sent over to the Community Foundation. Next, we move to reports from the mayor and city offices, and we have a report from Doug Bruce, our representative to the Capital Improvement Board for the Convention Center project. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I'll keep this as brief as I can. I do have a slide presentation for you. I believe this is the second time I've spoken to you on this. I think we're trying to work towards some way to do this quarterly and, or some way to be on your agenda to keep you up to speed. We're doing a lot, we have done a lot in a short amount of time. So a few things. First, I wanted to say, we do have a website, and that is MonroeCIB.com, and it's a wonderful website that one of the CIB members created. It has all of our meeting agendas, minutes, action items, so if you're lacking for anything and you can't reach me, please look up MonroeCIB.com. The second thing I'd like to bring up is that we have a community input meeting on September 16th at 6:00 PM at the Convention Center to kind of bring the community up to speed on where we're at and take some input on the preliminary, I'll say, designs, but we're, we're really, nothing is, other than sketches, it's not really, we haven't gotten down, we're at probably a thousand-foot level right now. With that, I'll use this and move through here. So this is kind of a quick highlight of what we've got in this slide presentation, and I have left this with your attorney as well, so you'll have something that you can share. So, you know, these are the project goals. Expanding the space of the existing Convention Center, creating inspiring architecture for our downtown, showcasing our uniqueness of our city, enhancing connectivity through our downtown, the B-line, and at the same time also making sure that we achieve sustainability on this project. Our progress to date, things have to happen quickly, and you'll hear more later, I think, from Jeff Underwood, our controller, and I know you've already heard some of the, the budget hearings. Working towards the board being created last July, getting the interlocal done, getting the 2024 budget approved, retaining professional services, Controller legal to keep us in line and help us out. We have the architect engineer on board, owner's rep, construction manager. We met and looked at the sites that are available to us, and we approved our desire for expansion to the east. Again, we have our website that has quite a few drawings as well for you to look at. We spent today interviewing three very interested hoteliers that answered our RFQ, and really today was about finding out for us what they would like, and, and what their desires are, what their, what their, getting their input on the sites that are available. And now we're looking at community input. We had stakeholders meetings about a month ago, and we went through with various stakeholder groups from the Visitors Center to the Chamber of Commerce, through Talisha, and the current, I'll say, marketing people of the Chamber, of the Convention Center to, to find out what kind of groups they're seeking and what those groups are looking for in a convention center. Key dates here, again, our community meeting is September 16th, that's a Monday, I believe, and then October 9th is a schematic design review meeting. January 25th ideally is when we would like to start, you know, getting on the agenda for the Plan Commission. Ideally, again, construction beginning in March of 2025, and then June, March and June, again, permitting takes quite a bit of time as well. And then moving towards the June of 2027 completion. And you've got to remember, you know, these kind of events that will fill this space are events that take a long lead item, so, you know, those are the kind of, we need to be booking those type of groups now for their large conventions in a year, you know, in a couple of years. I say bid opportunities here because we're going to release, we, ideally, we would, working with Weddell Brothers on this, who we've hired as our construction manager, working on the hard-to-get, long-lead items first, which is all mechanical and electrical equipment, getting the site ready, foundation instruction and steel, and then basically the, the build-out and finishing of the system, of the building. So when we look at this, this gives you a kind of, again, a quick overview of expanding east and why that made the most sense for all things to make this a successful project. And this gives you some of the reasons why, a couple of the reasons, you know, one is it puts us right across the street from our transportation hub in Bloomington. It looks towards, you know, it takes up two of our busiest intersections, which is College and Third, and Walnut and Third, so we get the most visibility, and it looks towards our downtown. And this site is kind of like filling in a missing tooth, so to speak, along Third Street. Again, this is about our community meeting. We had collaborator workshops, so this is a lot of what came out of those, working with Schmidt Architects and Convergence, those are our design team members. A lot of this, the, the pictures you see are, we use red and green dots to say what you like or what you don't like, and then we could discuss why. So it was a quick way to find out what people were interested in and what, I'll say, maybe, what are the defining character items that we'd like to see in this, that define maybe Monroe County and Bloomington. Out of that, we had a couple of different design sketches. These are, there were three really, one was Quarry, which was in the bottom here, dealt more with what the walls of a limestone quarry looked like. It was my least favorite, but somebody else was, you know, a lot of people, it was their, their favorite. The one above it was more brick and limestone, which you see a lot of downtown, and then, again, the other part of this, the one to the left, I think, was called Go Big. I think we just ran out of names. And that was because it was more modern. It was supposed to be inspiring architecture. You know, when you travel to these convention centers, when people leave here, what are they going to talk about? You know, again, we have competition, and we have to look at that. Again, conceptual building programs here, you know, currently, right now, we have 49,000 square feet, and I believe we have 16,000 square feet of it, of actual leasable space. You know, if, if you, I mean, recall, like I did, I bought my first car from this, it was a car dealership, it was Tom O'Daniel Ford back in the day. That really dates me, I know. The, the new, the program that we're working with now is a 40,000 or 60,000-square-foot building-ish with 33,000 square feet of leasable space. But it'll be multi-activity, as you can see, well, you know, we could have 171 exhibitor booths, banquet seating for 2,000, basketball courts, volleyball courts, because, again, these convention centers, not too unlike the designs of airports post-9/11, have changed quite a bit, and now you're seeing sports activities taking place as opposed to just, you know, a convention from some national group. Again, conceptual plan showing what we would do to, at the, at the main level, giving you an idea of how, how much spaces takes up. And I think you see the purple is all exhibit spaces and leasable space, the blue are bathrooms, kitchen, non-leasable space but service spaces, and then the kind of olive color around the expansion and throughout the existing building are what we call pre-function. And, you know, more meetings probably take place there as people come and go out of different spaces. This is a layout if you had four basketball courts, if you had eight volleyball courts, again, so pretty flexible in what it can do. And then, again, this is the upper floor. You know, we've been working with consultants and, 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 again, all of our meetings with the collaborators, and you really, you know, the, the one main thing is trying to have a link to connect these two spaces together, especially with our weather, and especially trying to keep pedestrians safe. And again, here are those concepts again, so the one city is the one that maybe relates more with brick and limestone as a base. Still, we have a lot of glass, and some, some quick models. Quarry, which was limestone-faced. And then, again, Go Big, which was more modern, more inspiring. And these are, again, nothing is set in stone, and these are just all discussion points. So, next steps for us, we spent most of today interviewing and learning, as I mentioned, from the hoteliers that are interested in the project, and we have three right now. And we learned more from them than they probably learned from us, but it really puts us on solid footing. It also shows that there's a great interest from some national chains to be here, some, some really amazing chains. You know, one thing that we learned is, if you really look around Bloomington, we don't have a full-service hotel downtown. We don't have a hotel where, you know, let's say, a, a football team comes here to, to play IU, they can stay and can have team meals and, you know, house the entire team. We, 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 we don't have amenities that those kind of hotels require. We learned a lot about that today. Again, our public meeting is on the 16th. This highlights, again, our schematic design review, hopefully our, our idea to start getting on the Plan Commission's agenda, and then working with the city as we start getting our, our numbers back for our preliminary budget numbers, starting to look at, you know, the bond issuance and how we work down the road, and I know Jeff Underwood can speak to that. So with that, again, to remind you, the 16th is a community input meeting, and we have a website, MonroeCIB.com. Jay Baer, who's on our, one of the CIB members, says we cannot say that enough. I believe that is all I have in my presentation. Opened, any questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you.
Are there questions from council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mr. Bruce. I have a couple of things to ask. One is, so I think a number of council members, myself included, made some modest requests as this has proceeded. One is that the Convention Center is also a civic center for, for the public to use, which the CIB has been amenable to. Local builders are utilized when at all possible, which apparently that is going to be realized in implementing local materials. Green building design, seems like you're on track for that. And I have one other request, or perhaps it's a consideration of yours, and that is that the hoteliers, that there's a consideration of wages and benefits for their employees. That is, do they, do they permit collective bargaining? What, you know, this is an eye on raising the wage floor in Bloomington. Where jobs rich, but where wages, they need to be bumped up because it's an expensive place to live. So what, what do you think of that proposition? Is that something you're considering?
It did not come up in our discussions today, but today also was not a selection. You know, today was really getting, seeing who was interested in our RFP. I would agree with you, you can't, you know, have lived in Bloomington more than a year and not be aware of the living wage, and, and also, and I had this discussion with somebody today a couple of times about, you know, I, I, you know, understanding, seeing the other hotels that have come up in town and the discussions that have happened over the years about providing a, a living wage. So that certainly, that'll be something that'll be brought up. Again, I'm your representative, so reach out to me and let me know what concerns and what you would like to hear, or what, what you have as items that, that I need to bring to the CIB. I will say this, I think your, your initial list for design desires and just items, I think there was 21 or 23 items, and I think we've managed to address 18 of them. So we are listening to you. I think those are very excellent points, and, you know, if you ask what I think about it, I'd say I would agree with you.
Thank you for that. And I will be following up. And is the September 16th meeting accessible? Is it televised, or is it accessible by Zoom? Is there any way to participate for people at home?
Yeah, it, it'll be covered as well.
Great, thank you so much.
Additional questions for Mr. Bruce? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bruce, for sharing these updates. I want to pick up on the point you, you closed with there about the guidance from the council. So one of the things that we agreed on was that in prioritizing the pedestrian realm and high-quality, compact urban forum in our downtown, that we did not want to see skywalk connections, specifically noting that those undermine human, human interaction with, with and the quality of public space. Again, we've heard repeatedly that this is about downtown business vitality and bringing people into the outdoor realm of our downtown. Am I understanding correctly that the feeling of the CIB now is to ignore that guidance and go with the skywalk over College Avenue, is that right?
Well, I, I wouldn't exactly say it's ignoring the guidance. It, it is, we've taken it under advisement. We, I mean, again, this design is not completed. Every, I'll say, every hotelier, convention center, consultant that we've worked with said that, again, I agree that a pedestrian scale and wanting, and, and, you know, having people interact with our downtown is important, and because of where we've located this, we'll have access points all the way around the building, but having a convention center and an existing convention center and not being able to go back and forth in January, or moving items back and forth from the loading docks to one building and having to go outside to do it, is, is just not, I'll say, not real feasible. So it's, it's something that we've, again, it hasn't been set in stone, and I wouldn't say that we've ignored it, we've taken it under consideration, it's just not something yet that, you know, it looks like we're leaning towards having to have some sort of connector. So if, oh, Eric Spoonmore is here as well, if he can speak, or, he's our treasurer.
Yes, go ahead, we only have a couple more minutes.
Thank you. And also, another consideration that we want to, you know, be, be mindful of is the council's resolution to reduce pedestrian deaths or injuries. I think that was passed back in April. And this is really, you know, having a skywalk to connect the two facilities is really the only 100% way that we can make sure of that, that pedestrians are going to be
are going to be safe, um, with the, um, with, with putting the new convention center downtown. So, you know, it, it is kind of a, you know, negotiating some of these different priorities. We're, we're trying to work through all that. It's not a final design, but we do want to be mindful of the goals of the council, and we certainly understand that pedestrian safety is very important.
Thank you for sharing your opinions.
Okay, well, we are at twenty minutes, so, um, thank you, Mr. Bruce. Um, I believe the mayor also wanted, uh, to have an opportunity for a report. Is that, is that true?
I don't need to. No.
Okay.
Have a discussion during the budget?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's really hard. I mean, I had my hand up. I'm sorry. I only have twenty minutes. Like, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Um, if there's no objection.
We have four minutes. We have three more minutes.
We do? Okay, if there's no objection, we'll, we'll go a few more minutes for Council member Rosenbarger to have a question. Go ahead.
I can put a question on this, but I, I mean, I just couldn't let it go without commenting. I don't think there's anything out there that backs up that pedestrians should be put in tubes to make them safer. Streets are dangerous by design, and if you think that the cropping of College at Third is going to create more pedestrian deaths than what we need to do is change the street so it's not dangerous by design. Also, if you think we should be putting durable tubes for pedestrians, then we have a lot more intersections than just Third and College. You have all our city intersections. Like, it's, it's, that's not okay. I mean, uh, you know, I don't support a lot of this anyway. Like, I just heard the other day fourteen percent of a dollar that goes for a convention center visitor goes back, uh, into the local economy. Um, but I just want to say, like, none of that was backed up with facts. And like, what is backed up is that we need to make our streets safer for the people using them at street level. Nothing is saying we need to put people above the street so like cars have better access. That's it. It's not, it's just not a question, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, now I think we can, thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you.
We can now move to, um, any reports from council committees? Do we have any this evening? All right, I don't see any. So next we will move to the first period of public comment on items not on the agenda, and I would also accept comments on the budget since we added that to the agenda late. And there's a total of twenty minutes for this, uh, public comment period and a limit of three minutes per person. So if you would like to make a comment, um, please come to the podium, and, uh, there's a sign-in sheet there, and I also ask that you state your name for the record, and then you would have up to three minutes. And interim attorney administrator Kula, could you make the announcement for people on Zoom?
Yes, if you are on Zoom and you would like to make a comment, you can do so by raising your hand, using the reactions tab, or if you cannot find it, the more tab. If you need assistance, you can send a chat to the meeting host.
All right, we have a first person here in chambers. Go ahead, please.
Good afternoon, or good evening, council members. My name is Taylor Brown. I am the newly hired legislative affairs specialist for the mayor's office. I wanted to take a minute to formally put a face to the name that has been emailing you, um, just so you know who it was. My, uh, one of my main goals is to ensure that there is a direct line from you all to the mayor's office, um, and I am here to facilitate that. I have gotten a fire hose of information and a crash course in local government over the last several budget meetings, and I've learned what a bond is, and it's incredible. You're going to hear all about it. And, and I am here to, uh, of course, answer any direct questions, but I look forward to meeting you and working with you not just on the budget, but as we move forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in council chambers like to give public comment? I see we have quite a number of people here. Okay, please, please come to the microphone and write your name, and then state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Counsel, I'd like to say first off, thank you for allowing me the time to, you know, present forth the, uh, the situations in which I find to be at hand. My name is James Bernard. I am one of the camp leaders for the homeless community in this town. I recently camp on the west side of town. I have fellow members of an organization who goes camp to camp, as well as which I belong to, that, you know, support and understand the direction I'm coming to with this speech. And I've already spoke with the Madam Mayor before coming in here tonight. Your honor, I appreciate the opportunity to do so, and I will be speaking with you in a more open manner later. The thing is, is not all of us in the homeless community, or I don't even want to use the word homeless, let me rephrase that, not all of us in our nomadic way of life that you see out there are bad people. Some of us are, some of us are not, but we all know, can we not agree, that it only takes a few bad apples to ruin a whole tree? So therefore, we do have a few bad apples in our society. We will agree upon that. Now, what we would like society to understand, from our point of view, is that, say for heating instances in the winter, blankets do get wet in tents, and they are hard to dry. Yes, I understand the open fire and less cooking policy that me and the mayor had spoke about, and Madam Mayor, we'll talk more about that as well. But what I would like to say is, there are supposed to be resources and places out there that are community support for the nomadic society in which we reside. And we are still part of the community, for in the word neighbor, legal and Webster's dictionary terminology, it does not say that a neighbor needs to live in a house to be a neighbor. It says one has to respect the community and be respectful of those in its community and help keep that community upheld and respectful of deeds and looking. And which some of us are trying to do, but we cannot do so if we keep getting run from campsite to campsite to campsite every week because of whatever reason. Okay? My wife has stage-four prostate cancer. In the last month, I've had to move three times, my camp with my whole family. My nephew, me, his wife, my wife, my dog, his dogs, my brother, his wife, his dogs, to another spot three times in the last month. Counsel, we would like you to know that we are more than willing to be a part of the success of our community as compared to being a disgrace and disruptive part of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else want to give a, a comment? Is there anybody on Zoom who has their hand raised? Okay. Yes, please come to the podium and write your name on the sheet and state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
All right, my name is Siddharth Das, a community member in Bloomington, and I have been part of an organization supporting the unhoused folks and the nomadic folks in Bloomington over the past few years. What we have been seeing and what folks who have been in this community have seen over probably decades at this point is the forced displacement of unhoused and nomadic communities repeatedly, every single year, at the same times of the year, multiple times, sometimes within the course of a few weeks or even a, or even like a few days. What we have been doing over the last few days is supporting some of the folks who have been displaced very disruptively over the past month. Some folks multiple times, three or four times within a week, with no solution whatsoever. The policies being cited are that folks aren't allowed to live and exist and camp and sleep in public, yet when we try to help folks find other spaces that may be less obstructive in the eyes of the city, in the eyes of the cops, in the eyes of the mayor that claims to care about any of these folks, when we even find private, private property that we have permission to camp on, all of these are evicted within the course of a few days. What we have seen is over the last two weeks, three or four times, we have helped folks, saw the same folks relocate after being displaced violently over the course of just a couple days. So when we are promised long-term solutions, when before these evictions happened, we were told by the city that there would be a permanent space for folks to be able to live, there'd be places for folks to be able to store their belongings so that they wouldn't be seized by the state or thrown away, and yet that has not been provided? And yet, you're displacing people multiple times within the course of a week?
Can you please address the council?
Okay. And then you're telling us that we need to wait for the long-term solution that was supposed to be already present? What are folks supposed to do? What are we all supposed to do when we're exhausted trying to support folks and being able to move? And what are folks who have all of their belongings on them, who are being uprooted multiple times over the course of a week, supposed to do? Folks do not want to move again, and we refuse to assist the city in supposedly cleaning up the community by helping folks relocate. We will not, because folks belong within the community, folks are not being provided the basic human needs that we all deserve and the basic dignity that we all deserve, and yet supposed long-term solutions that are not currently existent are being cited as a reason for displacing folks? What we are demanding is that we are not asked, and the unhoused communities are not asked, to relocate anytime until a long-term solution is in place. We need protections for our communities that are currently being displaced repeatedly at the same times of the year, each year, when the students come into town to try to make the town look more appealing to them, or whatever the reasons are. We demand dignity for all of our neighbors in Bloomington, and we will not be moved again.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in council chambers who would like to comment? Yes, please step up to the podium and write down your name and then state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Kyle Feldcamp. I am a community member and also student. I think we spent like thirty minutes talking about new convention center. It's probably going to cost a lot of money, um, and I'm hearing fourteen percent of that's going to come back to the community. And I think it was just kind of a joke, sitting here, listening to people's real lived experiences and their struggles, and then we're talking about throwing some money, trying to increase tourism or whatever. And so, you know, I think that this city is revealing which side they're on, whether you're on the side of the people who need housing, who need health care, who need higher wages, when we know, as we've admitted here, that this city is, for many people, unlivable. And so, when, when we're sitting here, listening to this, it's, to me, it's honestly kind of a joke. And whether you're on the side of the people or the Supreme Court that recently ruled that it's okay to do this to unhoused individuals, that you don't need a permanent space, and that they, it is by their nature criminalized to not have a home. And so I think that you guys are revealing which side that you're on, on this issue.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, please come to the podium and write down your name and say your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mo Murphy. Um, I wanted to speak along with a lot of the other folks who have been helping our unhoused neighbors move an untold number of times in the past two weeks. I really wanted to focus on something. Uh, we were speaking with Mayor Thompson, who was saying, really wanted to work on some goals about how to keep people following, uh, public ordinances. The ordinance that has been used has been two-five-seven, if I can remember correctly the number. Uh, the content of it says that it is prohibited to camp on public property. You can imagine it's prohibited to camp on private property because that would be trespassing. And we've been told, how do we talk to people about following ordinances? You cannot follow that ordinance if you're unhoused. How do you exist in a world where you do not have the means to have a home, to rent a home, and you are not allowed to camp in a public space? Like genuinely, as a logical question, what is the option except leave Bloomington? This is an ordinance that is directly telling, like, unhoused folks, nomadic folks, that they are not allowed to be here. It is move every couple of days your entire life's belongings or get out. That's unacceptable. There are ordinances that absolutely people would be willing to work with until a longer-term solution. This is not one of them. It is unreasonable, it is not sane, and it is illogical. Truly, tell me what you would like us to do. How do people exist? How do people live when they cannot sleep, camp, exist on public property? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to give a public comment? Do we have anybody on Zoom? No? All right, well, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Oh, somebody's getting up? Okay. Please write your name and say your name, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
This pen doesn't work. Uh, my name is Anna, and I am also here with my community to ask the question, where are people supposed to go? What are people supposed to do? Not a long-term solution that may or may not happen anytime soon, right now. People need somewhere to go and stay safely right now. What are people supposed to do? And like, I'm at a loss for words right now. People having to be moved over and over again, elderly folks, people with disabilities, uh, you know, people who are using mobility aids, uh, you know, trying to get from one campsite to another, hauling stuff, you know, two days in a row, again and again, and being directly told by police today that their best option is to move someplace until they get kicked out again and again, that that's, that's what they're supposed to do. I was directly told that. That's not a solution. That's appalling. This kind of policy at work in our city kills people. It's... I don't know. I don't have words to say. I'm disgusted by the city of Bloomington.
Thank you for sharing your comment. Any other comments? Going once? Going twice? Okay, step right up. Please write your name and say your name, and then you'll have up to three minutes.
I think also, good to point out is that it seems...
What is your name, please?
Oh, sorry. My name is Jessica. That there shouldn't be as much of a separation between like housed people and unhoused people because you can be unhoused at any point. Let's say there's a natural disaster, or let's say, um, there's a medical emergency, and like, imagine putting yourself, um, in that position and then not having a place to be, um, is like, what are you supposed to do? And so just imagine putting yourself in that position and what solutions can help the people that are like our neighbors and our community? So, yeah. I didn't, I prepared anything else, so, thank you.
You don't need to take up the whole three minutes. Thank you. Okay, we have about five more minutes of time. Does anybody else want to speak? Yes? Okay, please, uh, write your name on the sheet and then also tell us your name out loud, and you'll have up to three minutes.
My legal name for the record is Brandon Jones, but I go by Caleb. I am actually a, uh, current member of some of the encampments, uh, of Bloomington and whatnot. Uh, I'm one of the, as quote-unquote, been labeled homeless, uh, in this situation. I don't feel homeless, I'm more nomadic, honestly. Kind of like a Native American feeling, the, the call. Kind of like a Native American feeling the call of the wild, or whatever, you know, whatever your culture or your belief would be. I'm also practicing alchemical pagans, so making herbs and stuff from the plants that I find to benefit my community is something that I do, and I do well. It's a lot to be said in a very short amount of time, unfortunately, but however, I will like to add that fortunately tonight, we've actually had a chance to speak with somebody. I'm hoping to see some great change come from all of this situations going on right now across the city in regards to my nomadic friends and fellows. So... Yeah, my uncle, he says it right, it's more of a family and a community. It's not something that, you know, can be solved very easily from other people's point views, because it's not something that we see as something that needs to be solved, for the most part. We just need a stable place where everybody can coexist in a safe manner and everything else, have a possible solution for that. And all I ask is to be heard out for that. But I think that maybe the mayor's office and whatnot, since we had a small chance to talk before the meeting tonight, might actually finally give us a chance to actually do this and do this right, that can be satisfactory for everybody. So we can coexist in peace and just peacefully exist. And with that, I'm going to leave it at that for now, and I'm really hoping that this works out, and I don't have to, I don't have to come up here again. I don't like doing this.
Thank you for sharing your comment. We have about two minutes left. Does anybody like to comment? Yes, please come to the microphone, write your name, say your name. In this case, I think it's a little less than three minutes we have left. Two minutes.
Hi, my name is Deanna. I'm a local community member of Bloomington, and I have lived here for about sixteen years. My parents went to local university here about forty years ago. So, in short, Bloomington has been part of my life for a very long time. And Bloomington has been my home. And I want to say that again, Bloomington has been my home. That is not me saying that I live in a house to consider myself living in Bloomington as a home, and many of the nomadic members here at Bloomington consider Bloomington as their home. And let me say that one more time, Bloomington is their home. That is not saying that they must live in a house to consider Bloomington as their home. And yet, here we are seeing that despite that being the case, they are being pushed out of their home. They are being pushed out of Bloomington. And I think that that is unfair, considering the fact that I can also say that Bloomington is my home, yet I am not being pushed out of Bloomington, as I have lived here for sixteen years and continue to do so. So, I just think that that should be a good thing to think about, and, you know, a penny for your thoughts. I did not really prepare much for this speech, but I thought that that would be a good statement to leave today, that Bloomington is my home, and for the nomadic community members here, that Bloomington is their home. So, it should still, whether or not you live in a physical house, you should still be able to consider Bloomington as your home and not be pushed out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, we've come to the end of the public comment period. If any of you would like us to get back in touch with you, if you could leave contact information with the city clerk, because we don't know how to further this conversation if we don't have any way to contact you, so... Pardon me? Yes, yes, the mayor's office, we share information. Yes, very good. I do want to just say that although the city does have certain, does have responsibility to care for all of its residents, whether they're nomadic or not, the ordinance 257 that you cited is a county government ordinance, just so you know, not shirking responsibility, I just wanted to point that out. Okay, next, we will move to, I don't think we have any appointments to boards and commissions, so we will move to legislation for first readings.
Let me just change the thing that my screen is on right now. All right, first readings. I move the resolution, or sorry, that ordinance 2024-17 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded? Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion to introduce?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik? Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion passes, so will the clerk please read the ordinance by title and synopsis?
Ordinance 2024-17 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendment and updates related to grading permit and alignment with Title 13 and Bloomington Municipal Code 20.04 related to steep slopes. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments throughout Title 20 related to changes to the grading permit and other erosion control regulations and amendments to 20.04 related to steep slopes to align with state regulations.
Thank you.
I'd also like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-03 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All right, will the clerk please call the roll on that motion?
We've got to vote first. We have to vote first.
That's why I asked her to call the roll.
I thought you said read. It only gets better. All right, Councilmember Stossberg?
Yes.
Asari?
Sorry.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik is still out of the room, and Rallo?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-03 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for Personnel. The synopsis is as follows. This appropriation ordinance funds the position authorized in ordinance 2024-10 to add a facilities asset and operations coordinator.
Thank you.
And lastly, I would like to move appropriation ordinance 2024-04 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Yes, but I didn't actually catch who made that second. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Thank you. Councilmember Asari?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik is still out of the room. Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Stossberg?
Yes.
Thank you.
That motion is approved. Will the clerk please read by title and synopsis?
Appropriation ordinance 2024-04 to additionally appropriate from the Public Works General Fund for Debris Removal. The synopsis is as follows. On June 25th, 2024, the city of Bloomington was struck by a supercell storm and incurred costs... Excuse me? To a third party hired to perform debris cleanup and removal. The Public Works Department is requesting an additional appropriation to cover the costs paid to the third-party vendor.
Thank you. Next, we will move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
I would like to move that Resolution 2024-17 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
And we need a roll call vote on the motion to have the clerk read. Please.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
And Asari?
Yes.
Thank you. Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2024-17 requesting the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission to make a recommendation for expenditure of food and beverage tax revenues. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution is a request from the Common Council for the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission to recommend expenditures of food and beverage tax revenues toward a 2025 budget for the Capital Improvement Board.
I move Resolution 2024-17 be adopted.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. And I believe we have Eric Spoonmore, the Treasurer of the Capital Improvement Board, to present.
Good evening, President Piedmont Smith, councilmembers. Yes, we are here this evening to, and I'm Eric Spoonmore, Treasurer of the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board of Managers, here seeking a resolution that we can take to the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission for their recommendation pursuant to the food and beverage tax ordinance and the requirements of that for expenditures of food and beverage tax dollars. We'll get their recommendation, and then we would come back to the city council for final appropriation. And basically, this would amount to a resolution that would approve our 2025 budget that we presented to you all last week. So, happy to answer any questions that you have. Mr. Underwood, our Assistant Treasurer is here as well too, and our Controller for the Capital Improvement Board, happy to answer any questions or run through the numbers if you'd like.
Yes, I think it would be appropriate to run through the numbers just briefly. Mr. Underwood?
Yes, thank you. Jeff Underwood, Controller and Assistant Treasurer for the Monroe County Capital Improvement Board. The total budget request is $899,400. We have zero dollars in Category 1 Personnel Services, a thousand dollars in Category 2 for Supplies, 898,400 in Category 3 Services, and zero dollars in Category 4 for Capital. I'll break down the majority of those costs in Category 3 for Services, Professional Services, Internal, Legal, and Office Administration. Failed to point out last time that Bunker Robertson, not only is our legal counsel, but they provide all the administrative functions for the CIB. So, all the minute keeping and updating and public notices and those kinds of things, as well as serving as the central office for the CIB. That's 144,900. The Controller, myself, 71,500, for a subtotal of 216,400. Professional fees, external, owner's rep, 320,000. We have 2,000 in for our website updates, and then 360,000 in Other, which I will break down as 200,000 for Testing and Environmental, 60,000 for Commissioning, and then 100,000 for Utility Relocations and Connections, and that sums up to the 360, again, for a total of 899,400. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions either for Mr. Underwood or Mr. Spoonmore? Councilmember Stossberg?
Mr. Underwood, you, I think I just heard you say that the website was budgeted for 2,000, but in the paperwork, it just says 1,000. So, did you misspeak, or is the paperwork needed correction?
We have 1,000 in for Supplies and then 2,000 in for Website Maintenance. Should be the number.
I literally see where it says Website 1,000. I mean, am I looking in the right place right now? Because I also compared that at the same time to the budget slides that you presented last week, where it also has 1,000.
I can, I can, the amount that was approved by the Capital Improvement Board was 2,000 for the website in Category 3.
Okay, okay, I see on one page it says 2,000, actually, and then on another page it says 1,000. So, it should be 2,000 in both places?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Underwood or Mr. Spoonmore? I cannot see our Zoom council members if... If our staff...
Sorry, why can't you see that?
Okay, now we can see you. Sorry, there was something else on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Well, I do have a question. The, so the amount budgeted for the Controller, and this is a question for Mr. Spoonmore, is 71,500. That seems a lot for a part-time Controller. Is, can you explain, is this, is it go by an hourly rate, or how is this, was that number arrived at?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's an estimate based on what we feel the needs are going to be going forward. We know that there's going to be a lot more happening next year as we get into discussions about a potential bond, and so we budgeted for that. Also, remember, this is, you know, this is a contractual position, does not include any paid time off, does not include any health insurance benefits, does not include any perf or other types of compensation that a full-time employee would receive. So, for these professional services, we feel like this is a very competitive rate. I think the hourly rate is 125 per hour, which is very competitive for, you know, when I, in my other role, I work for the Chamber of Commerce, and we have accountants that we work with that charge considerably more, and I think that would probably be the case for a lot of other organizations that are working with financial services and accounting services types of folks. So, and that was also based on some of the previous billings that we had incurred with Mr. Underwood's services as well too. So, we feel comfortable with it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Stossberg?
Thank you. I actually thought of another one. During this year, you've come back a couple of different times for budget requests as things have changed. Do you anticipate that next year as well, or do you anticipate that the budget that's in front of us will be what ends up being needed in 2025?
Yeah, I think the last thing anyone ever wants to do is to come back for an additional appropriation for any reason. I'm very hopeful that this will serve our needs throughout the year. You know, last year was kind of a, well, this current year, it was unique because we needed that additional funding, but we knew all along that that wasn't going to get us through the full year, and I think we had consensus, I hope we had consensus with the council, that you all recognized that we would have to come back for another budget request to get us through the end of the year. I don't anticipate that that's going to happen. I sure hope it's not going to happen. I used to be on the county council, I hated additional appropriations, and so my goal is to make sure that that doesn't happen.
There will be one additional appropriation, but it's not on our operating budget. When the bonds get sold, those funds will have to be appropriated, and we would amend our budget for the expenditures of those funds. So, that, it's just a step that has to take place when the bonds are sold, but it shouldn't be an amendment to our operating budget.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I was going to ask about the bonds. That's a separate appropriation that'll come forward. When do you expect that'll come forward?
Working with the city administration and Controller McQuillan, we're looking at coming to you all in late January, early February for that hearing, and then hopefully with your approval, we would close on those bonds by the end of March and have funds available for the second quarter of 2025 that would coincide with the beginning of the construction.
Thank you. I have another question. I think that there was some other legal agreement needed between the CIB and the city in order for like the building corporation to be established or something like that. I'm sorry, I don't have all the details, but do you know what I'm talking about, and can you fill me in?
Yes, ma'am. So, my understanding is that we will need a city building corporation to be a So my understanding is that we will need a city building corporation to be established. And I think that's in the works. That would be the entity then that the properties involved would be transferred to, legally transferred to, and that would serve as the collateral for the issuance of the bond. And so that would be a necessary step for the city to take so that those properties from the county and the city could be transferred to that building corporation. The reason why the building corporation's established is so the city doesn't go beyond its constitutional debt limits. And this is a common, you know, the county has a building corporation. This is kind of a, a common practice to stay within your constitutional debt limits. It's a revenue bond that we're talking about, so it's all going to be based on food and beverage tax receipts. It's not going to be based on, you know, property taxes or anything like that. So that's, that's kind of what the next step is in the process. My understanding is that's in the works. So we're looking forward to that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, any other questions from council members? Seeing none, thank you. We will go to public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 2024-17? I don't see anybody in council chambers. If there's anybody on Zoom who would like to comment on this piece of legislation, please use the raise hand function. Or if that doesn't work, you can message the meeting host. Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, do we have anybody?
Raised.
Okay. We will come back to council. Are there any council members who wish to make a comment before the vote? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I'll be voting no tonight and also on the Fabtech recommendations coming back to us as well as bonds if the CIB does not take seriously the guidance that we, as the fiscal body responsible for approving the design and everything else with the convention center, put forward. I think it would be a failure to our own comprehensive plan and goals if we did not see those things through. Also, very deeply disappointed in the comments we heard earlier about pedestrian safety, which I can only describe as so fundamentally misguided that I don't even know where to start, honestly. So I have a lot of concerns about the project and its current direction. I don't have confidence in where it's headed. Was deeply disappointed in Mr. Bruce's comments. He literally said, "I'm your representative." The council clearly and unambiguously stated with unanimity what its priorities were. The fact that he isn't representing the council's views as the council's representative on the CIB gives me a lot of pause as well. I also have other concerns and questions about long-term financial planning and financial management of the CIB generally that I don't need to get into. But again, very unhappy with the direction of things currently. I think also, you know, we just had folks, I don't know if they're still in chambers, I'm not there tonight, obviously, speaking incisively and accurately about our failed humanity and the city's response to our unhoused neighbors. And correctly, I think, drew connections to projects like this. You know, I know that, that these food and beverage tax revenues have limited purposes, but it's actually quite expansive for economic development. We could be spending it on other things that would displace more fungible city funds and be, allow us to put millions into helping folks direly in need. So I don't know. Again, just really disappointed, I guess, is the best word for it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, thanks. I think I'm going to go back to my practice of just saying out loud, I don't support the convention center. I don't think it lines up with our goal, city goals. I think we have more urgent needs and I'm just going to go back to voting no so that my public records can show that at least, even though I understand most everything will pass. Tiny tidbit, Denver Convention Center doesn't have a sidewalk. You have to cross, I think it's a pretty major one-way street, and they also have a tram that goes right in front of it. So pedestrians have to cross the tram track in traffic. TripAdvisor says, everyone says this is pretty easy to do. I also just think with everyone here, you know, talking, I mean, Councilmember Flaherty just touched on, sorry, it's just my bullet point. The urgency of the unhoused, folks not having safe places to sleep tonight has been on my mind, you know, since I took office. And sadly, it hasn't gotten any better. It's really hard to be one of nine on a city council. I don't know if everyone is still there, but I just like want to say sorry. I'm like, I am at least trying really hard. I think people should be allowed to sleep outside at night somewhere safe. Kind of a higher level point. I think Mr. Spoonmore knows how I feel about safe streets and what I want to see in changing the way our street system works in Bloomington. I have spoken about it publicly many times. So I think when someone comes, in general, if someone comes to talk to me and is like using an argument against what I believe in, but trying to convince me of something, it's a real turnoff for me. Like I want to be able to trust people and have an honest conversation. But when, when someone comes and tells me it's not safe for pedestrians to cross on the street there and so we need a skywalk because that will, that moves in the direction of vision zero and safe streets for all, like that's just, that's not, that's not accurate. And it just like really destroys, I would say, like my trust, my trust in someone, like anyone coming. I just want to make sure I'm not really, I'm trying to speak in more general terms here. I mean, it's happened like with administration, with past administration, right? It's sort of like spinning something, trying to get a vote. Like that's just not what will get my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from council members? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes. Thanks for the presentations this evening. I appreciated the answers that I received. I think that this has the potential to serve the needs of a lot of people in Bloomington, and not the least of which are those restaurants and the hospitality industries that agreed to the tax. And they had, had an expectation that we would deliver on the proposal for an expanded convention center. So, you know, with all respect, and I know that my colleagues understand this, that, you know, not all monies are fungible and we have a commitment that we have made. And I want to make good on that commitment and I also want to make good on making it the best quality. And everything I've seen the CIB deliver has been respectful of council, I feel. Now, you know, you know, I've, I've seen my desires basically honored. I understand that there are some differences of opinion. I don't quite understand why a skywalk or something of that nature is a deal breaker in this case, because I think that we could have that sort of connectivity with also safe streets. I don't think that one precludes the other. And so I'm happy to talk to my colleagues some more about this, but I have a difference of opinion there. So I will support this and I appreciate the work of the, of the CIB and, and best of luck going forward on this. Appreciate it.
Any other council member comments? Okay. I will just make a couple of comments. I feel that, you know, I've attended some of the CIB meetings and I, I feel that the council has not, beyond the openness the CIB has to everybody attending meetings and coming on September 16th, et cetera. I, I feel like the council should have more involvement than that and should be invited to some of these collaboration meetings that you were talking about that came, through which you came up with these three prototypes, rough ideas. I mean, I didn't hear anything about that until I went to the meeting and there were these three ideas up there and I don't know where they came from. And it really feels like, yes, that you're saying, yes, we're being transparent, we have a website, we have these public meetings, et cetera. But I feel like the inclusion should have been more for us and should, hopefully will be more before you decide on a design October 9th. That's coming up. That's pretty soon. I have no idea what the September 16th, it's kind of billed as an information session. I don't know if that's actually going to gain input and it's, it's for the whole public. So it just feels like we're being treated as members of the public, whereas we are representatives of the residents of Bloomington and we are responsible for use of tax money that, that has been collected through the restaurants in Bloomington. And, and in that respect, I, I do feel like there has been insufficient collaboration. I'll vote yes on this because it's just sending it to the Fabtech, but I hope we can, I hope that you're more forthcoming as far as setting up meetings with us and actually talking about these things a little bit more than you would with a member of the general public. So with that, I think we're ready for the clerk to call the roll on Resolution 2024-17.
Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Flaherty?
No.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasberg?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
No.
All right, that passes by a vote of six to two. Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore and Mr. Underwood for your attendance. Next, we will go to additional public comment. This is comment on items not on the agenda or you can comment on the budget, which we added to the agenda. Anybody in chambers? I see one person approaching. So this is a maximum of 25 minutes for this part of the meeting, three minutes per person. And as always, we ask that you sign in and state your name for the record. If you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand via Zoom, the raise hand function, or you, if that doesn't work, you can send a chat to the meeting host. And we'll start here in chambers.
Good evening, Madam President. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce and resident here of this great city of ours. I thought I would take a precursor to the discussion to allow those disappointed with my comments to voice them eagerly. The 2025 city budget is complex and has many challenges and tough decisions that shape Bloomington's future, yet it also offers us an opportunity to create a budget that addresses the needs of our community grounded in fiscal responsibility. To seize this opportunity, collaboration between the council and the mayor's office is essential. While recent communication breakdowns between the two bodies cannot be ignored, we must move forward and work together, not look behind us. For Bloomington to thrive as a vibrant, innovative city, it's crucial that we attract and retain top talent. With one of the nation's best public affairs schools at our doorsteps, I should know, we have access to a pool of skilled professionals. Offering competitive compensation in key areas we've had difficulty filling and retaining remains essential. The budget moves in that direction while recognizing the strain these places on city finances. Therefore, I urge the council to conduct a thorough audit of city personnel to identify opportunities for streamlining the workforce without compromising the quality of our wonderful city services. This can lead to significant savings and more efficient city government with better-paid, more productive staff. Now, considering those financial constraints, we must commit to fiscal responsibility. While the budget before you requires general obligation bonds and, and use of a rainy day fund, these tools should be used judiciously and reserved for critical needs. Like a family dipping into savings during hard times, we must recognize these funds are not finite. Additional priorities, not without opportunity cost. So we must ask, what projects do we deem to be critical and there is another way of those projects to be funded? Are the projects not included in the city budget critical to our immediate future of Bloomington? Greenways, bicycle infrastructure? Our strong mayor council system gives this body the authority to deappropriate and delete items from our budget. Are the projects included in the budget worth deappropriating and deleting other projects? It's always easy to add spending, always easy to add priorities, but, but can we make those cuts? As we present, as we presently meeting our existing obligations, are we doing that with public safety? Are we meeting the capital maintenance? Is our infrastructure being properly sustained or are we willing to push off essential repairs for the sake of other projects? The Parks Department alone faces aging ballfields, pools, and ice arena entering its last time around the rink. These are tough questions and decisions that people of Bloomington have elected you to tackle. What are the projects that you are willing to fund while adhering to fiscal responsibility? Let us work together to craft a budget that is not only balanced, but also reflective of this community's needs and fiscal realities. This is the time for careful consideration, tough choices, and most importantly, collaboration.
That's your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other council, public comments?
There is someone on Zoom.
Yes. Okay. You can go ahead and state your name and you'll have up to three minutes.
Okay. Hi, council members. My name is Wes Martin. I'm a member of IAMF Local 586, which is the Bloomington Firefighters Union. I joined this meeting to express to council our labor union's support for the city's 2025 budget proposal. Our union just worked out our contract with the city administration and I'm happy to report that that contract has been approved unanimously by our membership. As far as I know, that's the first time, at least in recent memory, that we've passed a contract unanimously on first vote. We're thankful to this administration for putting labor and workers at the forefront of the 2025 budget. And it's still the week of Labor Day. And it seems fitting to draw attention to the work that's being done by Mayor Thompson and by Deputy Mayor Knapp to make sure that our city works for those who make our city work. The 2025 budget contains many things and among them is a huge step to improve our city employees' salaries and pay scales. For us at Local 586, this contract promises greater retention for our firefighters and officers, ensures that we can stop the brain drain of institutional knowledge and the loss of experience to officers and personnel to other departments around the state. That retention itself is crucial to maintaining the safety of our personnel on scene and ensures better outcomes for our community members and those experiencing emergencies and crises. So we really want to highlight that this budget is a huge budget for workers and for labor here in the city of Bloomington. It is one of our community's largest and, in my opinion, the most important employer. And I understand that some council members are upset that policy priorities haven't been included in this budget. But this budget, as it is currently written, is transformative for a lot of our members, the members of our union and for a lot of our city's employees. Those of us in labor and in trade unions are encouraging this council to pass the budget without any further delay. Thank you for your time and for your consideration. And I'm excited that everybody has really positive and proactive measures that they want to see to improve the city.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
Yes, there is an additional comment I'm seeing of that I'm going to read into the record.
Okay.
The Monroe Convention Center is getting ready to grow and we want you to be part of our, a part of the journey. An expanded convention center means more space for events, boosting local businesses and bringing new opportunities to our community. But don't just take our word for it. Come learn all about what's happening at the Monroe County Convention Center on September 16th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Join us for a fun and informative evening where you can ask questions, share your thoughts, and get the scoop on how this expansion will benefit Bloomington. See you there. That is the comment.
Thank you. And I don't see any other commenters here in council chambers. Anybody else on Zoom?
Not at the moment, no.
All right, thank you. I think we'll conclude the comment period and move on to discussion of the mayor's budget proposal.
Madam President?
Yes.
I have a motion with regard to the structure during this agenda item. I would like to move that during this discussion of the mayor's budget proposal, that we suspend the rules with respect to the structure of debate, questions, and comment periods, and structure the discussion to have opening statements of up to three minutes per council member, followed by a period of question, answer, and discussion among council members and the mayor that starts with the mayor. And then that would be followed by a period of public comment that allows a maximum of two minutes per speaker, followed by any additional questions or comments by council members and the mayor.
Do we have a second? Thank you. Any questions about... Any questions about the motion? Structure debate. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, yeah, sorry. I just didn't hear the time limit for the mayor. I just didn't hear it.
There was no time limit for the mayor. The time limit is only for opening statements by council members, and then after those opening statements, there would be as much kind of back-and-forth dialogue between council members and the mayor. But I thought that it would be prudent to give the mayor kind of a first opportunity to speak and respond to anything that council members had said. I also just caught a gesture. I did not specifically include any other members of staff or the city clerk in this. I think that we should be able to include, for example, the controller or the clerk if they have applicable information. I don't know if that has to be specifically included in the motion.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Does it? Deputy Attorney Kulek?
I mean, I don't think so. I think you're suspending the rules with respect to the code on the time limits on debate and the way you structure your agenda. So, yeah.
Okay. Does that answer your question, Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yeah, I mean, I just am a fan of time limits. So, I mean, it's eight o'clock. I'm going to actually have to jump off at nine o'clock. I don't know if you want to add time limits for everyone, for all opening statements or something, or if you really just want to let it fly. Okay, those are my comments.
Okay, well, we can vote on the motion and see if it carries. Councilmember Stasburg, did you want to say anything else in response to that?
Well, I think that we thought generally about whether there should be a maximum amount of time for this entire period of discussion, and I think what I decided was I didn't think a maximum amount of time for the entire period of discussion was necessarily appropriate, just in case people wanted to continue the discussion past that. But you're right. I mean, it's eight o'clock. How long can we expect a productive conversation to last? If all eight of us take our three minutes, that's 24 minutes. How long are we going to spend talking about this right now? Like, yeah, and I think all those things add up, and so we just kind of have to be, have to all be cognizant of that. Thanks.
All right. If there are no other questions about the motion, Clerk Bolden, will you please call the roll on the motion to structure debate and to suspend the rules and sort of structure debate?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Ann Daley?
Yes. Thank you. So we will proceed with each council member having up to three minutes to give initial comments, feedback regarding the mayor's budget proposal. I will not go down the line. Whoever wants to go first should please raise their hand and be recognized. Councilmember Zulik?
Hello, everyone. Thank you. I have a little prepared speech, so if you see me looking at my computer, that's why. I just want to start off by saying thank you all for taking the time to be here today. Thanks to my colleagues, thanks to Mayor Thompson, Clerk Bolden, our council staff, and thank you to everyone who has taken the time to work on this budget. I recognize that this is a rigorous process, and I really appreciate those who have contributed to it. As any deliberation takes to the tango, I recognize that we all had room for improvement on communication and collaboration. In regards to me, I'm very passionate about food security, but our council priority line item regarding food security was pretty vague, and I believe it would be unfair to expect the administration to do all of the legwork in regard to how we can do better next year when it's a priority that we all share. I propose that when we start scheduling our meetings for next year, we incorporate monthly budget meetings with Mayor Thompson and Clerk Bolden starting as soon as January. In terms of this year's budget, I'm incredibly excited about many things, including, but not limited to, the pilot programs at hand, CIB budget, and salary raises for many employees throughout the city, a trend I hope we can extend to Clerk Bolden's employees. However, as we have seen, there are many things that were outlined in the council priority letter that we have not seen specifically budgeted for, and I recognize that not everyone, or no one, gets everything they're looking for in a budget. So here are my top priorities. Since it is difficult to identify the exact funds that Safe Streets for All, including the High Priority Network, will require, I am hoping to get a written commitment from Mayor Thompson to fund the project when the time comes and an allocation of $500,000 for the sidewalk fund. Number two, $10,000 to fund a study executed by LEAP, also known as the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, on how a community responder model could improve public safety for Bloomington Police Department and other departments that deal with public safety. Number three, increase clerk's staff salary by a few thousand dollars in a way that would not require changing the job classification and amount appropriated to Category 1. I believe Clerk Bolden can speak more to these specifics. Number four, raise the clerk's salary to 85% of the mayor's salary, as that is the standard for several similar-sized cities, including Gary and Columbus, Indiana. Historically, the clerks have received less than half of what the mayors received on a yearly basis, and as the mayor's office has historically been held by men, not anymore, and the clerk's office has historically been held by women. It looks to me like the clerk's pay has been treated as the wife's salary, and I propose to remedy this issue. To reiterate, I recognize that there are many things that we will not get in the budget, but these are the things that I feel the most strongly about being included. Thank you to everyone for their time and willingness to hear each other out, and I look forward to our further discussion right on time.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Councilmember Stasburg?
Hi, thank you. I pretty much have two things that I would categorize as, I kind of want to categorize them as must-haves in terms of seeing some evidence of commitment in the, in spending for 2025. One of them has to do with public safety. I think that we have an incredibly high dispatch call volume and that that has increased significantly over recent years, and I don't think that there has been a satisfactory answer given to me about why exactly, and I would like there to be some financial commitment toward a data analysis of those calls. And I think that that is something that, in terms of the specialization that somebody would need in order to really properly analyze those calls and categorize them and figure all of that out, I think that that needs to be somebody who's not currently within our departments, because everybody currently within our departments, especially those that might have expertise in public safety, are quite busy doing their own things. And so that's why I want to see some, some allocation for that purpose to analyze those calls. And I, my objective for that is so that then we can use that analysis to be able to move forward and serve our residents better, to understand what it is that they are calling 911 for, what kind of services do they need, so that we can either preemptively address those, or so that we can make sure to tailor our public safety response accordingly. The second thing I'm really interested in, some sort of means of support, is, as Councilmember Zulik mentioned, the Safe Streets for All Plan that's going to come out, Greenways Projects, that Thornton Connection got mentioned. I'm unclear right now about what, if any, of that category of engineering products are currently being funded in 2025, and I would like to make sure that we continue infrastructure upgrades for bike ped. Those are the two things that I definitely know I want to see. A third thing that I'm very interested in doing, it won't stand in the way of my voting yes on this budget, but I would really like to see an increased stipend for council president. Currently, the council president gets a $1,000 stipend for their service, and based on what I've seen this year, the council president works at least two to three additional hours for each regularly, regular session meeting, which I want to increase that from 1,000 to 1,500 for the year, and that would mean that, that would be roughly about $44 additional per regularly scheduled meeting, and I think that that begins to adequately compensate for the additional work that the person who is in the role of council president has to do. I think that that's all I'm going to decide to have time for. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Yeah, echo a lot of the thoughts already shared by folks, and of course, shared a lot during the Budget Week. I think there's improvements that happened by way of process with this budget, but also a lot further to go. As I said during the budget, I think while I support a lot of what's in here, there's still some, some major gaps to me that mean I can't support it as proposed. A note about compensation, noting comments from Wes Martin and others. I think universally, we support the increased compensation and recognize that we've fallen behind on that front. That's going to happen, in my mind, regardless of the final budget we pass here. In fact, it can even happen as an additional appropriation from the general fund in the future. It doesn't even have to be part of the budget. So that's not what we're voting yes and no on when we talk about this. To me, it's about addressing, addressing the failings on safety in our streets in particular to address the 14 deaths and hundreds and hundreds of debilitating injuries we've experienced over the last five-year period and will continue to experience for reasons that are preventable, and our responsibility to address, our sole responsibility, in fact, as the people who maintain our transportation infrastructure. So that is absolutely a public safety crisis. The fire, the police, everybody else working on public safety should be deeply concerned about those failings. So we need to address that. There are some small things that I think we need to see that are easy, not a big budgetary impact, including supporting the clerks' salaries that we're looking to get some more information about, and the clerk's salary itself. On the council budget, I think the sidewalk fund and the absence of more comprehensive capital planning, it's very reasonable to give what the council asked there. Support the stipends for president increase, as well as making sure we have adequate funding support for our staff salaries. On the capital planning front, this is the crux of it and difficult. It doesn't have to be in the budget, it can be bonds, but the rub is we probably need something like four to five million annually going to infrastructure. When we passed Division Zero statement to achieve zero deaths in our streets and zero serious injuries in our streets by 2039, that was an increase in ambition from where we had been historically. Currently, this budget is a decrease in ambition relative to historically what we've been funding. So that's a really, really big disconnect that we need to address to save lives and prevent injuries. I think the Indiana Avenue safety improvements are an important thing to include because we've been moving forward on that and figuring out what the timeline is for our High Priority Network. It sounds like it's 20 to 40 million dollars, based on the engineering department's answers today. Exactly how much we can leverage from state and federal sources is unclear. I tried to get clarity on what we've been able to leverage historically, also unclear, maybe one-to-one, I don't know. Point is, significant city contributions. Additionally, the staff-led traffic calming in Greenways, $0 funded this year. In 2022, that was $400,000 from the alternate transportation fund. So we're not using the alternate transportation fund for that purpose anymore. That, to me, seems like a shortcoming and a possible place to get funding from. So that's the, the big issue that we need to tackle, I think, is the right level of funding and the sources for capital on transportation safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? I know you have opinions. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I'll go. I am a little envious of Councilmember Zulik for planning ahead and getting something written out. Okay, it's not how I tend to fly, so I'm trying to say things differently from budget hearings, but it is very similar. I do want to say thanks to everyone for doing work. I think this is, of course, an incredible lift, it's incredible effort, and just doing it in the time that we all allot to it is a lot of probably like nights without a ton of sleep and stress and all that good stuff. So I always appreciate getting good work done, even if I don't agree with all the bits and pieces. Reiterating some, I agree with funding a LEAP analysis, meeting with LEAP and learning about LEAP from CAPS. I think it is an awesome opportunity that LEAP is looking for a Midwest city to do this project with because they've done, they've done call analysis for cities across the country, but nothing yet so far in the Midwest. And so they, it's just a really awesome opportunity, I think, to do it with most likely a very low budget ask from us because they have a funder who really wants it done. So I think it is awesome for our city to get that done for a reason. Councilmember Stasburg and Zulik stated. Transportation plan, you know, Safe Streets for All, we've talked a lot about it. According to the website, you can't get funding for that 18 to 36 months, until 18 to 36 months after you have an implementation plan in place. Obviously, a year and a half to three years, and we need action way before that, before we have our transportation plan that needs funding on a really big scale. Councilmember Flaherty weighed in on this. It's not just about what we can do in our budget, but it is about $5. It is about bonding. Those things are more difficult for me in the amount of time we have. I don't know how we can get that guaranteed or get to a place that I feel comfortable that it will in fact happen next year, if that's even an option according to the administration. Death on our street, dangerous by design, it's not unlike death in our city due to homelessness and addiction. They are each a crisis, they are each incredibly urgent. I really want us as a city to look at tackling all three of these at the same time because I think it's just absolutely necessary. I mean, we have people getting run over by drivers, and it is, it is horrific. And I mean, we have people sleeping outside with no places to go, and we do things, like we count how many potholes we have filled, we count how many needles we have picked up, and every time I see these numbers, I'm like, but we have people dying, and it's just, it's really hard. I'll stop right there. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Councilmember Rallo?
I'll keep it brief. I said a lot during the budget debate, but I think this budget honors the fundamentals that I would be looking for in a, in a budget with the needs, many needs, many needs of the city. The fundamentals being appropriate compensation for staff, as recommended by the CRO study, addressing public safety salaries and compensation, which has had chronic deficiencies for years and has left us in this dire situation of required overtime for, for police officers and attrition and so forth, and morale problems. I think that, as the firefighter said, I think that this is absolutely fundamental. Health, safety, and welfare are top priorities as elected representatives of the city. I didn't ask about the police station, whether a new facility was being considered, or we were going to intend on renovating the existing facility, but I look forward to discussions about that. In terms of the general obligation bonds, I'm still at a point of understanding and exploring that, and I reached out to Controller McClellan to say that I would enjoy a meeting just to get better versed on that, and she was happy to accommodate me, and I haven't done that yet, so I'm going to do that. I guess my, my only, I don't want to say it's a failing, but you know, my only real ask is that, having been on the council for a very long time and see, seeing historically CDBG monies in greater and greater deficiency over years, we have the opportunity for the Jack Hopkins Fund to mitigate that and replace that funding and do a lot of good which it has in the community. I appreciate the, the increased amount. Perhaps we could do something on the order of matching the need, because we, the need, I think the request last year was 600, 650,000. I think that's a legitimate need. I think the need is real. I think people are suffering in our community and elsewhere because of high inflation, because of lots, lots of low wages and so forth, and, and we need to address, we need to help those social service agencies that do the good work in the community. So overall, I think that this is a very sound budget, and it's, and it is respectful to...
That is your time.
Yeah, to the absolute needs that we have. Thanks.
Thanks. All right. Councilmember Daley, would you like to, do you have any comments?
I don't have anything new.
I don't have anything new, and that hasn't already been said, and that I didn't say last week, but just to go on the record, I'm, you know, I will be supporting this budget. I, I'm all in favor of, you know, compensation, raising the compensation for our, our employees in the city. I think we have great people who are working for the city, and if we can't retain them, then we'll be in worse shape than we are now. So we definitely want to make that a priority to retain the great, the great city staff that we have. I, I am also in favor of, you know, more work on our streets and our sidewalks. I've said that, you know, I wasn't, when we were putting our priorities forth, I didn't, I didn't firmly assert anything, but that is the one thing that I, I do most firmly support. I guess you put it that way. So I would like to see that, and you know, we've had some conversations about that. Otherwise, yeah, oh, and also, you know, I want to do better supporting the clerks' staff too. So that's also part of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Osare.
I'll just say, I mean, I've, just to echo what I've, what I said at the end of the, of the budget meeting, that, you know, I thi- I think that given the way that we presented the priorities, I think that I'm quite satisfied in the good faith effort to meet the majority of the things we have here. What I'm interested in though is more so talking about the strategy for GO bonds particularly is, and, and thinking about how creatively we really can reach that, for example, $20 million mark for infrastructure. And so that's sort of more, more what I'm interested in talking about. I, I think given the way that, that we presented priorities to the mayor, I think that this is a, this is a equal reflection of what we presented, which was a equal set of priorities. We never said that we cared about one more than the other. I wish we had, but we did not. And so I think given that, you know, at this stage, I'd just like to reiterate the fact that I'm supportive of where we are right now, but look forward to further conversations about what we're going to do with some of these other possible funding streams.
Thank you. So that would let, that me, that leaves me, I think. So just, I, I'm in favor of reaching a new paradigm for public safety in our city. Public safety is not just police, obviously not just fire. A lot of the safety concerns of residents have to do with mental, mental health issues, substance use disorder issues, poverty frankly, people who are unhoused, perceived to be a safety threat. What we really need is a comprehensive view of public safety and how we can make the streets more safe, make the community more safe. The police department budget requests, the outcomes were more police officers. That, to my view, that's not a community outcome. The, the outcome I'd like to see is, is a safer community. And I think hiring more officers is not the way to get there. There's been studies shown that a higher percentage or proportion of police officers in a city does not create greater public safety. And we have so many issues that are not really related to law enforcement, that are related to mental health care, that are related to, you know, people who just are, are not well-served in our current system. And the Law Enforcement Action Partnership, as has been mentioned, acronym is LEAP, has a, a community responder model that they have researched thoroughly and they have helped many cities to develop such a model. And I feel strongly that they would be a great consultant for the city to hire in order to take a comprehensive look at our public safety needs and improve our outcomes. I don't think such an analysis could happen as effectively in-house because everybody in-house is already part of a system that is not working for us. So we really need to hire LEAP, and I think $10,000 would be sufficient, which is a drop in the bucket in this, in this budget. I also want to agree with some of my colleagues that pedestrian safety needs to be a priority that we actually fund. And the transportation plan as well has things on the one to three-year time horizon that haven't even been funded yet, and we're in year five. So, you know, if that's not spelled out prior to approval of this budget, if that's not spelled out as going into GEO bond proposals, then I would have a hard time voting for this budget. So those are my comments, and now I'll, I'll welcome Mayor Thompson to come up and, and give some initial feedback, and then we can have, have a conversation.
Thank you. I will keep my comments short, but do you want to address a few things? I've been furiously taking notes, as have others, but for those of you who had multiple things on your list that I may not have caught, I, I did reach out by email, but to all of you last week, Isabel said that she wanted a meeting. I've been trying to reach out to those of you I hadn't heard back from proactively, but I will again reiterate my willingness to talk. And, you know, honestly, this is one of the most important practices that we have right now, this budget. This is the critical interface between two branches of government. And when I ran for office, I committed to a transparent and collaborative approach to government, and I think we are iterating our way with this budget process into a more collaborative approach. But I want to assure each one of you, you don't need five votes to make a change in the budget. We need to just decide it's something important to do and figure out how we're going to do it. We have a finite amount of money to work with, whether we borrow, whether we spend what we have, ultimately, we, we have what we, what we have or what we can acquire. We have presented you already with a deficit-based budget, and the GEO bond was presented as a possibility for adding some extras. They're not, I didn't mean to insinuate they're extras, adding additional priorities that we were not able to fit in to the operating budget because the operating budget is only one of the funding streams that we have. It needs to fund salaries. We can't bond for salaries. Infrastructure and capital projects can be bonded for. And I also want to note that while Bloomington has, for the state, a relatively low tax rate, we have increased taxes lately. And if you're not hearing from constituents about the pressure that that's putting on people, especially on fixed income, I want to communicate to you that I am. And so we are doing our best to put together a budget that meets top city needs, looks at other funding streams to potentially fund capital projects, which they can do pretty well, and attempt to not increase taxes. So I, I am deeply committed to being a great steward of our fiscal resources and committed to serving the people who work so hard for the city. And one of the most practical ways we frankly can get a lot of this work done is to pay people what the market says that they should be paid. We've done salary studies, we're doing one for elected officials now. The equity in, in that is that we will have a system that actually gives us professional recommendations for salaries. The turnover in places like public safety, planning, transportation, et cetera, is actually costing the city money, and it's costing us projects that we could otherwise be doing. So I want to commit to you that we, we would really eagerly like to look at the possibility of GEO bonds. There are other funds we can look at as well to fund things like sidewalks. The Safe Streets Initiative, I know it ties to sidewalks as well, but the Safe Streets Plan is, I mean, the, the project is submit the plan and you can get additional grant funds. So we also will continue to seek those grant funds, and we are in the middle of a multi-year plan that I am committed to carrying out. I am happy, I, I just wanted to be sure that Controller McClellan, I don't think she needs to make opening comments, right? But we both are available to answer questions for you all, and I just would really love to have a conversation out in public about how we can collaborate and get where we need to get.
Thank you. Are there questions, direct questions for Mayor Thompson? Councilmember Zulik.
Hi, Mayor Thompson. Thank you. So you said that there was a multi-year plan in progress? Is there a document that we could look at, or is it still like in the planning stages?
Sorry, the Safe Streets?
The, I thought you were talking about a multi-year plan overall.
Oh, so we are, two things that I probably should have said, it has, President Piedmont Smith has suggested that we start a year-round budget team. I'm in favor. I think that is, that'll advance us and get to a place where we can actually build a collaborative budget. We are looking at multiple different plans. Councilmember Flaherty has suggested a, a title that I can't remember. Councilmember Flaherty, a comprehensive, a strategic sidewalk plan, something like that, comprehensive sidewalk plan?
I said sidewalk, master plan.
Master plan. Thank you.
The planning document.
Yeah. So, you know, the controller has, has already committed to doing a multi-year financial plan. We run, obviously, a multimillion-dollar organization here, and any good business, good government does a forecast so that these multi-year plans, transportation, sidewalks, public safety, all of these things, we forecast what we're going to need. That's how we're going to stay up to date with salaries and everything else. So this, this overall financial forecast can help us and should tie in all of the plans, the transportation plan, a sidewalk master plan. We would all love to fund every single priority, and I think taking a five-year view allows us to see how can we strategize these priorities in a way that's best for each of the funds and gets the, gets the urgent needs met and ensures that we are planning for the important needs as well.
That's great. Thank you.
So the multi-year financial plan, I guess I'm, I, I hear a lot of council members, including myself, are concerned about funding transportation improvements and in particular, funding transportation improvements.
Funding or bonding? Sorry?
Funding.
Funding?
And, and especially for increasing pedestrian safety, which of course, we've committed to with Vision Zero. So since the, the federal grants that you're talking about are still quite a ways away, are, is that, is there a commitment to put transportation improvements as one of the purposes of the GEO bonds?
That's correct. I mean, we would have to decide together how much, and Controller McClellan has looked at different amounts for those GEO bonds and their implications. Those are, she can go into more detail with you. I have now had two requests for sort of bond classes for council members, maybe members of the public would like to come to those as well. But the length of the bond affects how much we can borrow without increasing tax, taxes, et cetera, et cetera. But it would be our intention to fund those capital projects, transportation sidewalks, those are exactly primed for a GEO bond.
So is there something we can do between now and when the controller has to turn in the budget numbers to the state to secure some kind of commitment for transportation projects to be brought forward in a GEO bond?
You mean the initial posting next week?
Yes.
Or the final numbers at the end, towards the end of the year?
No, it's, no, next week, the September 10th deadline.
Can we get a bond done in a week? No?
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying that. I know it takes longer, but I, for one, would like to, to have a commitment from your administration to fund certain things through a GEO bond before I vote on this budget where there's no money for certain things that we prioritize.
Yeah, my understanding, so my verbal commitment is that's what we would intend to use the GEO bond for. My understanding is we cannot commit in writing to what will go in a bond without going through the bond process. And so you have my verbal commitment. I would, the, the council obviously has to approve the bond. I think we need to have a collaborative discussion about what bond we want, do we want to do a short-term, two-year? Do we want to do a five or 10-year and get more money? Do we want to do a rolling bond? So we need to have a collaborative discussion before we can go through the bonding process. But you have my word, this, this was the way that we anticipated attempting to fund some of these infrastructure costs that couldn't fit into the operating budget so that we could fund the things that we cannot bond for.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I, I, this gets a little more specific. I appreciate your, your little comments, Mayor Thompson, but it is on topic, which is the, the Indiana Avenue safety improvements. My, my, so my understanding was that there, and I think the engineering budget Q and A confirmed this in, in the written comments, that there was funding or partial funding, I'm not sure exactly how much, in the 2024 budget, I think in planning of transportation, which is why that project had moved forward. But since it started, the timeline has backed up some, and those funds are maybe no, no longer available. It was suggested that in 2025, we could, you know, look to, to federal funding or something like that. I was trying to understand, is it just because those funds would revert? Am I misunderstanding the, the nature of, of the situation, what was budgeted in 2024 and, and the, the effect of the, the calendar year turning over?
We can check into that for you. I, I'm not exactly sure the exact details of that, but we have not discussed reverting those funds.
Don't, don't most funds revert automatically if, if, if not, if not otherwise allocated or committed in some, in some way?
I believe that's correct, but we would have had a discussion about knowing that we had funds and allowing them to revert. So I'm happy to look into this and find out what the, what the funding plan is for Indiana Avenue and whether or not there are still funds available in 2024.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I look forward to it.
Yeah.
Controller McClellan, do you have any further information on that?
I don't. Is this related to cred?
It is not, I don't believe. I think this was, I'm not sure if it was Alternative Transportation Fund or other, like I'm not sure the fund source, but I believe it was in 2024 budget for planning of transportation. But that doesn't, it doesn't seem to be moving forward, so.
Okay. I'll follow up with you.
Councilmember Stossberg?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. First, I, I appreciate that Councilmember Piedmont Smith was kind of talking about some kind of assurance with regard to bond-related stuff because I also had that as a question on mine, like how, how can we assure that? And as you guys were having that conversation, I kind of thought, well, maybe we can kind of assure that. And as you guys were having that conversation, I kind of thought, well, maybe we can kind of assure that in the next, by, by more than just your word, in the next week by actually scheduling some of those meetings. Because I, I do want to learn more about the bonding process and understanding exactly how that works. And it sounds like there's some decisions to be made collaboratively about what kind of bond to pursue. And then also potentially how to kind of allocate within that, like, what exactly we're going to spend it on. And I'm not sure how specific we would need to be during that process or, yeah, I'm just not sure. And so perhaps in the next week, it would certainly make me feel better to actually schedule those meetings, get things on the calendar, so then we have a time set when we know that we're going to talk about it and, and we're going to figure out things by such and such a time with regard to, to those capital projects. And then the second thing that I wanted to ask about that was, so say we do that and we approve a go bond, would that money actually be available in 2025 to be able to spend on any of those projects? Or would we have to wait additional time?
2025?
Okay, great, thank you.
So I'll follow up on Councilmember Stossberg's suggestion to have a meeting very soon.
Not necessarily, yeah, schedule the meeting. It doesn't have to be, the meeting doesn't have to be soon, but maybe the scheduling process could happen. Get it on the calendar.
So what is, what is the timeline? I know you've been working with financial consultants and I don't know at what point you would be ready to sit down with council to talk about the geo bonds. I mean, I assume you're ready now if the, it's just a bonding crash course in general, but for the specifically.
As far as the timeline, we don't need any action from you, any vote to advertise the budget next week. We will advertise for a bond that gives us the ability to even have the possibility to pass a bond. So we will advertise for a bond. We needed, we needed to know everything that we could possibly, if you have additions to the budget, like, you know, council stipend, other things that we would work with you to, to add in, we needed to know those things. We are, we hear that you're interested in a bond, so we're going to add that to the advertisement. It doesn't involve a vote of any kind. And then meeting with you probably the next week after the week starting September 16th would probably be a good week to start meeting about bond projects, so we get that rolling right away. And by then I'll have all the information about different bond sizes and terms and interest rates.
Thank you. Councilmember Osari?
We're going to give them all to you all at the end.
Thanks. The first question is, could we talk a little bit about, and I know within the budget, and I asked these questions in, in writing, I think gave a really strong answer. But we're talking about these bonds that would have an impact on people's taxes immediately? Or can you explain what the impact would be on, on human beings in Bloomington?
The impact would be no different than it was last year as far as we can control. We want to keep our tax rate, the city tax rate, exactly the same as it was last year.
Okay, so, so people wouldn't, wouldn't see a difference in what they're paying in taxes right now?
But if their assessed value went up, then their rate will generate more taxes. So assessed values generally, but not because of our budget.
But, but because of the go, if, if, if we did pass go bonds, there could be an impact on, on what taxes people pay next year, is that correct?
If, I want to push back on that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm trying to under, yeah.
Yeah, because I think that, I think I was, just want the administration to be really clear that we are not impacted. The only thing we have control over is our tax rate.
Right.
And that's set by like what our budget is, and if we include the go bonds and we are keeping our tax rate exactly the same as it was last year.
Right. And so, but, and then so where is the, now, if we didn't do a go bond, would people get tax relief?
Yes, taxes would go down for most people.
And, and what's the scope here? So I know that we have a lot of bonding capacity, but like how, like what is that? Like, like, where's, where's the realm here and sort of what is, what is your suggestion for the right per size, if you will? Like, what is, what is the right size? And I know that these are conversations that we have to continue to have. But because, and I'll explain why I'm asking all these questions. It's because, you know, if, if the suggestion here, and, and I have other proposals for other ways we might think about this, but if the suggestion here is that the way that we fund some of these missing priorities, and to be clear, these missing priorities are huge. I mean, and not, not that they're gapping, I've already made my point that I don't think they're gapping holes in the budget, from my opinion, but they are, they are big asks, right? So when we talk about the sufficient funding for infrastructure sidewalks particularly and safe streets, I mean, that's a lot of money. Do you actually think that, I mean, to leave, I don't want these two things to be totally abstract, right? Like, do you think that we could bond reasonably for, to meet the need that we'd like to meet in infrastructure funding?
Short answer is yes, and the long answer is just there are a lot of options and I want to share all those options. There's just a couple different, there's a few different ways to slice and dice it.
Fantastic, so it is actually, it is actually on the table as a possibility, right?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
I, I have some other thoughts, but I, I don't want to, that's a different line of thinking if, if, if the chair would allow.
Go ahead.
So, so the other just thoughts here, to me, like, the, the only two other things that, that come to mind for me is, and I don't know what the, again, what the per size is of, of this and don't have personally the, the RAM, you know, or math skills, I should ask Councilmember Stossberg to help, but to, to, to do this myself. But have we looked at the question of every year, you know, there are certain things that we over-budget? Like, we make estimates of what, you know, sort of what we want to need, and I'm so sorry that you're standing. You should come and sit down. But is there, you know, that, that sort of gap on a yearly basis of, of what we give departments and then what gets reverted? Do we have some sense of, of how much that is?
Yes, and I'm trying to, we, we estimate for 5% and it's always more than that. And I want to see it gets close to 10%, but I really need to look at the numbers.
Of the overall budget? And then, and so is there a way that we could bake that, like, like that flexibility that we estimate for? Like, is there a way that we could use that maybe or assign that or some, is there, is there some flexibility there?
A lot of it is due to salary, is unfilled positions.
Yeah.
And that makes it kind of difficult to make it flexible.
Makes sense, makes sense. And then, and then the last thought for me was there were, there, the, like, the two other places, like, if I was looking to like where we move money or what we, like, which is, you know, not a, I don't, when we talk about go bonds, but is, is the question of, there's some things that are placeholders? So, I mean, and, and things that, that we support, like, for example, Public Works wants to, wants to get a new building, so they have a placeholder of $300,000 within the budget. That's again, a sort of an estimate so that they can do the design work, et cetera. Are there other things like that that perhaps we should have thought of last week but that are specific placeholders of an amount of money? You know, it's sort of sitting there, we're like, well, we don't know if it's going to be, it might be 300, it might be 150, it might, right? Where some specificity might free up some funds?
I wouldn't classify there, I don't think there's anything that I would classify as a placeholder. There were some things where like, we have to do this study next year, we're pretty sure it's going to cost 250K. We're not exactly sure, and I've said, can you please get a quote as soon as possible?
Right.
So we can update the budget. I mean, those I guess are placeholders, but it isn't, it is work that is actually going to, going to be done.
Of course, of course. But the, the amount is what I'm, is more so saying, right? Because like, is there, like, have we baked in a sort of plus minus there? And is it enough money to do something with?
There's not very much there.
Got it, okay.
Yeah, I tried to make everybody stay away from that, like, we don't.
Right. So which, which is to say very thoroughly that, that we think that the only way that we do this outside of us coming up with a real strong, like, we don't want X in the budget, is to go bond.
Yeah, the only real placeholder, really the real true placeholder is that 6 million for salaries.
Yeah, fantastic.
That is a true estimate.
Yes, and I think we've all made a strong argument for why that needs to be there.
Yeah, and, I mean, I believe in a budget that truly reflects what you're going, what you plan to spend next year. I don't want to, and I tell departments, please spend your entire, work really hard on your projects to spend your entire 2024 budget as close as you can to zero. Because that shows that you have the capacity to spend your 2025 budget. And that, you know, like, it makes budgeting easier when your departments spend all of their budget because then you know they needed what you gave them. Like, this is an exercise for me too to say, what do you really need before it even comes to you?
Yeah.
And so we worked really hard to not have placeholders and to really, and to not dip into any more deficit in the general fund and to come up with creative other funding sources, like, TIF can fund infrastructure. You know, we still have ED Lit, if we move things out of PS Lit into a bond, we can put salaries in PS, more salaries in PS Lit. There's a lot of funding sources that I think we as a team need to look at.
Great.
But yeah, thanks for letting me opine about that.
Yeah, and then the very last question I'll ever ask, and then I'll be quiet for the rest of the evening, is why don't we go further, like, like, why don't we go further into deficit? Because we've talked about that maybe we hold a bit too much in reserves as a city. So why, why not just spend more and just have a bigger deficit at this point?
Well, the structural reason is that it's very hard to cut your budget back from what you did the previous year. And I was very reluctant to spend more into deficit and then the, and then the more we spend down our deficit, the smaller, it's going to feel like the, the less budget we have every year, every year. It's like, why didn't, why don't I get as much money next year? Well, we spent into the deficit and we're getting closer and closer to the bottom of the barrel. So your budget starts shrinking, it's very deceptive.
I've, I've wanted to call on a council member who hasn't had a question recently. I saw Councilmember Rallo's hand first.
Okay, thanks. So to take the opposite point of view, and, you know, when I, when I just, as a novice looking out at the markets, I see overleveraging everywhere. And I see some warning signs like in commercial real estate. And so I, I get very skittish about drawing down on reserves. I think it may be geo bonds are a good idea for funding capital projects, but I'm, I'm, I'm kind of bearish on, on expanding spending on council priorities as have been discussed. I don't, I don't argue that they're not important, but I think that in the context of the time that we live in. So my question is, suppose something akin to 2008 happens and property values fall and assessed values fall. Are we, have, is that part of the consideration? It's got to be part of the, you know, I mean, you know, I, I'd like a world where everything works out in the future, but it may not, it may take a while to get there. So what do you, what do you think, Controller?
We, we still consider as, you know, as a city and, or as a controller, we still consider property taxes very stable even because we have the maximum levy. And so even if property values were to fall and all of our assessed values were to fall, it would be difficult, it would be hard on our taxpayers and I think that we would have to make budget cuts. We would have, we would be able to raise the same, legally raise the same amount of money that we did the previous year, but we'd have to consider the effects on our residents. And I think that's where we could make some, we could really help residents if we were in that situation again.
Okay. So I'm, I'm a little wary of increasing debt and debt service, looking forward at this point. So that's where I fall, just thought I'd tell you. And, you know, it's kind of a contrarian view, I suppose, but I think it's worth, worth, worth considering.
I'm going to call on Councilmember Rosenbarger because she said she had to leave at nine. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Okay, going down this bonding, TIF, just new TIF district kind of thought process. I, I'm, I'm trying to hurry, but you can't tell. I guess I'm thinking like, look, so I think kind of what we need to do is look through the budget to be like, what else in the budget can be bonded for or are you capital projects basically? Because, I mean, I think right now it's mostly what got taken out, you know, is transportation, which I find very urgent. And I, I would hope that we can get some transportation funding back into the 2025 budget. Like, Councilmember Osari was talking about, you know, the Public Works building design, that's 300K in the budget, but that can probably be in a bond and it's, there's going to, there could be some time for that, you know? Like, it could wait until there is bond dollars for the design and the construction. Also just thinking, you know, I talked about Safe Streets for All thing, 18 to 36 months before you get funding after you have a plan. But also if the 20% match in the 2025 budget, I don't think has that match in it. So that would be like something we would need to put in if we are in fact trying to get Safe Streets for All dollars to get that federal match in 2025. So I, I guess is like, is that, are we kind of at a place that, like, we're in the next 10 days, we're going to look at some changes to the budget before it gets submitted? Or I guess, I don't know, Mayor, like, is that, is that kind of the route you're going down? Or are you kind of like, this is the budget, vote yes or no on it? I guess, I just don't know if that's been like asked and answered. Thank you.
I'm going to try to answer your question, Kate, and just stop me if I'm not getting to what you need to know. Sounds like you definitely are aware of the transportation projects that were not in the budget. We have a list of all of those, plus some more that were not even suggested from engineering. And we have that in our list and I have worked with engineering to like pick the ones that he thinks are definitely doable in 25 to include those in the bond. I made a note about your question about a 20% match and is that in the budget? I'm going to follow up with that and find out, but I will say that I increased the, the Community Crossings matching grant funding to include that in the bonds. We get 100% of our 1.5 million that we need to budget to, you know, match the state's 1.5 million. And then, did you have another, can you remind me, was there anything, oh, are we going to, like, what's the next process in the next couple of days? Like I said before, I can just advertise the budget as presented high. I can, it will be advertised high and then include a, a line for another bond debt levy, so that will be included. So we have that option. You haven't approved it, we have the option, that there's no vote needed on advertising the budget. And then we can follow up in the next week with the list of projects that we think meet all your priorities and have some things in there that were not in the budget for transportation. And that's kind of like the preliminary, like, this is what we're thinking. And it would officially come to a vote for you when we bring you the bond ordinance later in the year.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I get that, sorry. I, I, my question is, just like, it's on that path, but, you know, is the administration up for making changes to the budget? Or are you only in this next phase before it has to get, you know, submitted and advertised? Or, you know, so is there wiggle room where it's like, what in the budget could be bonded for and maybe wait until later? Like, I suggested the designs for Public Works Building. Or is this like, hey, you all, this is the budget, we're here to talk to you about it. We will not be making changes and all changes will be auxiliary funding later. I just, I'm just asking, like, I don't know where we are, you know, like, in the nitty-grittiness of the process.
Yeah, we're here to talk to you so that we can make changes. So we're trying to get enough input so that we can weigh options and move items around to the best of our ability and try to meet as many needs as we can. And also to hopefully help people understand that there are other funds available that are really practical for many of these things. So I understand this as a trust exercise because the council has the most say in this operating budget. And then with, with bonds and with things that are already seat-controlled, you don't have as much of a say. You have, you have to vote on the official bond. We can put that together, together though. And I think my goal is that we are rowing in the same direction with goals and figuring. And I think my goal is that we are rowing in the same direction with goals and figuring out how to get them funded. That, I mean, that's what's best for our city. So be fiscally responsible. I, I'm not telling department heads to spend budgets. Spend what you need. And, and only what you need, but, you know, we have a commitment to making some choices and trying to fund as many priorities to the best of our ability as, as we can with the best source of funds for those. That's why we're here.
Hey, thanks. Yeah, that is very helpful, just so it helps me know, like, how much to dig in, in the next, I mean, dig into the budget and look at things in the next few days, yeah.
You meant dig into collaboration, right, Kate?
Decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. Dig me a hole and sleep in it, thanks. Okay. I mean, I'll sleep in it, so I was saying. This is a joke, but I'm out of here. Thank you so much, everybody. Okay.
Councilmember Daly, did you have a comment, question?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I missed this or if this is, like, incredibly basic, but just going back to the bond thing. What would be the downsides for Bloomington? What are possible downsides for doing the bond? You know, for example, would it negatively affect our credit rating?
It doesn't negatively affect our credit rating. A downside would be you get, you use up some of your debt capacity. So if another project comes along later and you need to bond for that, you are, you have limited a little bit your ability to bond for debt. So our bonding limit is set by statute. It really does keep us from overcommitting because it is one-third of 2% of our assessed value. So when that assessed value changes every year, it could go up or down. But at the time of bonding, it, for that bond, it is one-third of 2% of assessed value. So, or 2% of, yeah, I think I might have those numbers mixed up, but I, I can, it's small. But, yeah, that's a very good question, and we'll have all of that from the financial advisor to share with you.
Okay. So there's, like, not a scenario with it blowing up in our face and?
Not, not that I am aware of.
Good. I like that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We generally can't bond unless we have the, unless we have the revenue to support the payments. They, it just can't happen. I mean, I say generally, I mean, I don't think you can ever bond as a government without having the revenue pledge to support it.
Councilmember Stasburg and then Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you. I just had a follow-up around, I really appreciated Councilmember Berthari's comments about that idea of looking around and seeing what other small amounts there might be. Because I guess the statement I'm going to make first is, I'm really nervous about only using go-bonds as a methodology to fund transportation, infrastructure initiatives. That just makes me very nervous because at this point, they're not really a sure thing because we have to go through the whole process and we have to vote on it and we have to approve it. And so I guess I would like to see maybe at least if there were some projects that could somehow get some maneuvering happening to get funded into what we'll end up being presented with, whether that means that some other infrastructure project, like maybe the public works building, ends up going into the bond category instead of the general fund category, or there's TIF dollars, or there, you know, like, whatever it is. I think that I would really like seeing at least some actual firm commitment of money that is definitely already there, as opposed to something we have to bond for. So that's just kind of a general statement of what I, I would like to see in terms of that. And then I, I also want to make sure, I suspect that Councilmember Flaherty has a comment also about transportation stuff, but I, I do want to make sure that we talk about the public safety initiative piece that we also mentioned several of us in opening comments. Thanks.
Did you want to respond to that?
I mostly, I know we're, I'm hearing that the public works planning is maybe low on the council priority. I do just want to communicate that evidently that has been committed to verbally for about six years and never gotten funded. And we have, we have big trucks that are rotting outside. It's wasting our money not to do it. So my commitment is that we're going to dig through the budget and figure out how to, how to maneuver some things. I just want to be clear with council, there is a reason that that is in there. That may be something that we can bond for, and the trust game goes both ways. So if we do have to take this out, we will want it in that bond. It's, I mean, it, it is good stewardship of, of $100,000-plus trucks.
Yeah, I, I agree. I just, I was using that as the example because that was the example that was easy for somebody to throw out earlier about infrastructure, not necessarily that I didn't feel like that was a worthy project of, of moving forward with. That, that was my reason for using that.
Yes, I will not be a mayor who builds things for the sake of building them. It's, it actually is needed.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Following up on some of what the mayor just shared there, I think, looking at the, the budget as proposed, like, two things I'm looking at. One is new spending and trying to get kind of a complete inventory for myself and my own understanding of, like, what's, what's new here so that we can actually have a real conversation about trade-offs of new initiatives versus, you know, plans and goals we've committed to but have not been able to meet, especially ones that are, that are particularly dire in terms of the, the life cost. The, the other is looking at changed spending, where, where things are different than in the past, and just trying to understand why or what's, and those might be one in the same in some cases. And so, one, like, example of this, and if it's two in the weeds, we don't have to talk about it, but I was just curious as I was going through things now, is there's a million dollars in street operations from the parking meter fund when there has been zero dollars from the parking meter fund in street in the past three years? And wondering if the Controller or the Mayor knows specifically what that's for, if it displaced something else? And most of the parking, parking meter fund goes to parking services, as one might expect. But interestingly, alternate transportation fund money, to the tune of, oh, I forget, offhand, $268,810 is also going to parking services. So like, we're not using the parking meter fund for parking services and using the alternate transportation fund instead? That's not really its purpose. So, so these types of questions, and I guess very specifically, the million dollars in street, I'm curious if you all know, but that's the type of thing I'm trying to unpack so that I can, I can understand where there might be room or play or where there are things that I'm not seeing.
That, the million in parking meter fund is because Public Works was just begging for some, its supplies for paving, its supplies for upkeep of the road. It's not in capital expenses, it's in paving supplies, and they're basically just like, we, we have to get some money from somewhere. And we looked at the parking meter fund and the ordinance allows upkeep of curbs, roads, sidewalks, where the parking meters are or streets that connect to where the parking meters are. That's in the ordinance, and so I said, how, you know, we've never used this before. Would you be open to using the parking meter fund? And they said, yes. And then as far as the alternative transportation fund, those parking meter dollars and there are salaries for the people, salaries and supplies for the people who collect the parking revenue that goes into that fund.
Okay, thank you, that is helpful. I did have a follow-up, if that's okay, or I can wait if there are some questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Wanted to dig into TIF a little bit more as, as a funding source. We've been talking a little more about that, and I know, Control McClanahan, you sent over an email, I think today, with, with a summary table and some different things. And the Mayor rightly noted that, you know, there's kind of less oversight or control from the council side, especially at amounts of less than 5 million. My sense is that when we, in a TIF district, bond for, or, yeah, we bond for something, when we pay off that debt, if it's before the statutory limit on the TIF district, we don't retire the TIF district, we keep collecting the revenue. Is that accurate? Like, until the end of the statutory period?
We don't have any areas that have, are in that situation.
So every active TIF district has outstanding debt currently from?
Except for the Kinzer, the very small little Kinzer-Prow area, and that actually does expire soon. But yes, every TIF district that we have has active debt because it's all consolidated, because it's the consolidated TIF district. Is that kind of where you're?
Sort of. Let me, let me maybe restate, like, the statutory limit now is what, 25 years? Is that right? For a TIF district?
Most of our, most of our areas, yes.
Okay, so like, if we're to create a new TIF district and it's a 25-year statutory limit, would we automatically seek a 25-year bond? Or might we seek a 20-year bond or a 10-year bond, depending on the size or nature of the project?
You would, this, I'm not exactly sure because I think it just depends on how you want to structure your funding, and it's a case-by-case basis. So you could see a 20-year bond or a 25-year bond. The clock starts ticking as soon as you bond, I'm pretty sure. This is, yeah, I'm not an expert on, I know what I read it.
It's okay, we have to keep going down this thread. My, my more general point here is that, my, my sense is that we don't always have issued debt on the exact same maturity date as the TIF district's statutory limit itself, and that there is in fact a gap period through which we collect revenue and spend it on things, and the council really has no insight into any of that at all. And I'm not sure anybody does too much. But it all gets maybe more confused in the consolidated context as well. It sounds like it's too much to get into here. We're going to have to have more conversation, but I, I guess my point more broadly is that I'm curious to dig into the, the possibility of active TIF district revenues that may not be accounted for through debt service and/or new TIF districts in the context of infrastructure, especially the type of infrastructure that tends to improve property values and therefore tax base. Sidewalks are among those things, for instance.
Absolutely. Matt, I absolutely agree with you in that that is a perfect use for our extra TIF revenue, that it should be going to our infrastructure in these TIF districts that's going to improve property value. So we have, we have, I currently have sort of two different models on how to fund things, using TIF and bond or just using bond. So as you can imagine, we have a little bit more flexibility if we also look at TIF. So that's something that we will bring to you, too. Now that opens up a whole nother can of worms. Now everyone's like, wait, what? TIF? TIF and bond? It just means we can do more projects if we start looking at TIF. But it also means we have to ask?
That's an RDC decision.
Yes, that's, it also means it's an RDC decision. So.
So I, I have a question that is taking, taking us on a different path. So I'm in favor of the, the compensation increases, but I still don't understand how the big salary bump this year or in 2025 because of the CRO study will not, it'll have an impact on future years. I mean, if you're increasing somebody's salary by $10,000, then you're going to have to pay that $10,000 plus the COLA for many years down the road. So how can we support that if we're, we have a deficit budget this year?
The big bump this year could be a 10, 20, 30% increase in their salary, depending on what they get, but then every year after that would only be like a two or, like a 3% or 4% increase. It's just a much smaller increase after that.
I know, but you're still paying that higher base amount.
I understand that it's on a larger salary, but for that many salaries, like, in general, 3% increase, just like rough math off the top of my head from what I've seen, it could be like 1.8 to 2 million for increase, if you do 3%. It's just a much smaller amount when you're only increasing that salary base by 3%.
Yeah, but you're going to be like, the, the person who made $80,000 this year is making $90,000 as a result of the CRO study. You're still going to have that $10,000, you're going to have to pay extra in 2026, plus the cost of living increase. So how are we not getting into a hole where we have to use a deficit fund every year?
We put it in our model, in our, in our financial model, and it, I mean, yeah. We get more every year, is what the Mayor said.
Okay, so you're estimating that, that increased property tax revenues are going to cover that?
Mm-hmm.
Other questions? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I forgot to ask, what, what's the balance of the CREED fund?
Let's see, we appropriated like 12.075 million last year. I believe close to 4 million has been spent or encumbered, and so they have about, you know, 8 million to spend by the end of the year.
And is that, I guess when I'm, okay, let me step back. I'm curious about, my, my question I wanted to ask, actually, was, we talked about public safety pay, but we're also concerned, the council's been concerned about facilities for the police. Is that under consideration right now and where's the funding coming from for, for that? Are we going to be using CREED funds for, to finance that?
It's, it's very early in the planning stages. It's not considered in this budget. Or, I mean, all the funding options are on the table, but we have definitely not made any decisions on what, how to fund that in the future. Could you say that's accurate?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at possibilities, but we're not even.
Please come to the mic so that everybody online can hear.
Yeah, we're looking at possibilities for the police, but we're not at a place where we even know the, the various options and how much they would cost.
When you develop options, you'll, you'll let the council?
Of course.
Yep. We weren't always included in years past.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're going down, you know, we want to do enough, enough homework on some options to bring you something tangible and not go so far that we've made decisions. So we're, we are working on it.
Great.
Although it has not been front burner in the last couple of months.
No, that's okay. I mean, I'm sure they can subsist on their, on their infrastructure they have right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Stasburg?
Councilmember Piedmont Smith, mentioning the cost of living increases, reminded me that the other thing that I wanted to maybe say tonight has to do with cost of living increases because I feel like when, when we give everybody across the board a certain percentage of cost of living increase, that just promotes further inequities because somebody making $100,000 is then getting, say this year with 3%, an additional $3,000 based on that, but somebody making $50,000 is only getting $1,500, and yet both of those people are paying the same amount for increased costs of, say, groceries and personal care items and gasoline. And I think that I would just like to put a push, not this year, because I think it's a little late in the process this year, but in future years to reconsider how we do cost of living increases and to not always just do a flat percentage. Because that, what that will do is that will further separate the top from the bottom in terms of how much people get paid.
I think at this point, I'd like to give the public an opportunity to comment, but I hope that nobody, that the, the Mayor and Controller don't go away because we can pick this conversation back up. I just realize it's getting late and there may be people in the public who would like to comment on the budget. So if there's anybody in the public who would like to make a comment, it'll be limited to two minutes. I don't see anybody in chambers getting up. Deputy Attorney Kulak, can you make the announcement for Zoom?
Yes, and if you are still with us on Zoom, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab or the more tab to let us know that you would like to make a comment or send a chat to the meeting host. So far, there were no immediate takers before I made that announcement.
Okay, we'll give it a moment.
Correct.
Okay, let's go back to our discussion. So I, I think I, I would like to get to brass tacks and see if Mayor Thompson, you would be willing to fund the, the LEAP study for Community Responder Program and analysis of our calls to 911 in the 2025 budget.
Yes, I will, I, I think that's $10,000, we could probably figure that out. I, I will just say, best practice in hiring consultants is that you actually put an RFP out and, and get multiple bids so that we're not determining who we're hiring. We are, we're saying some work needs to be done and we're allocating funding for that work. work, um, but I, I could commit to getting that done.
Okay, so, I mean, you can issue an RFP, and we can make sure LEAP knows about it, and they can reply?
Of course, yeah, but you asked me if I would put LEAP into the budget, and, and so I was clarifying that I would, that a, a study on analysis of 911 calls, outsourcing that, would be what we would put into the budget, rather than a, a particular vendor name. We don't have vendor names in the budget generally.
Okay, well, LEAP does more than that, so they analyze 911 call data, not just call types and numbers, but the actual narratives. They meet with current, the people in, in the current public safety system and community stakeholders. They compare needs to best practices from cities that have, uh, CRM programs. They produce a written report outlining findings and recommendations. So I would want all of that to be in the RFP.
Understood.
Okay, so you would be willing to fund that?
I am, I'm absolutely willing to look at it and, and get an RFP together for the study that we believe that we need, and I, I don't know that, I can't process that big verbal, um, list of requirements and, and commit to it without thinking about how do we get everything in. But yes, generally speaking, I hear what you're saying, and, uh, we can commit a budget line item for outsourcing some analysis.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember comments, questions? Councilmember Sari?
I also have a question for, for the rest of my colleagues. I mean, what, so where, where have we arrived? So is there, because I, outside of Councilmember, um, Rosenbarger, who had to drop the call, we haven't talked about things that we want to remove or change in the budget as much. I mean, and I, I think, I think Councilmember Piedmont Smith has made a clear statement about something that you want in, and it's a, I think, relatively, you know, agreeable ask, right, and a, and a small cost, but is there, I mean, where are the rest of us? Like, what are, what, what are we asking for here? I think Councilmember Rallo, Daly, and I have all said we're supportive, so, I mean, where, where are we?
So the other council members who wanted to see changes, Councilmember Stasburg?
I will say that, uh, where I am is an expectation that in the final presentation of the budget, there will be a line item with allocation for analysis of our public safety systems, including dispatch, um, calls, and, um, that I'm hoping for some sort of maneuvering in terms of getting at least some actual money allocated into transportation systems or infrastructure, however we want to tie it, somewhere in the engineering budget, I think, uh, and to not just totally rely 100% on GO bonds for those projects, uh, but that there's also the commitment to start having those meetings about GO bonds and making that happen. And the, um, couple I didn't get a chance to, you know, in my three minutes, uh, one of the other pieces that, in terms of cutting things, uh, which you mentioned, is that right now there's duplication in a homeless coordinator positions between two different departments, and I think that there could potentially be space there. And then I also, um, was asking questions earlier, uh, of the mayor about this analysis, or, sorry, the, the rebranding, um, pot of money, and kind of wondering about that. So I think that there's some pieces in there like that, that, uh, could potentially be moved around or slightly changed in allocation in terms of satisfying my interest in, um, making sure to fund the public safety study and not entirely depend on GO bonds for transportation initiatives. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, 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 totally. I might add a comment, I think, which is relevant for all of us. And I, I think that the major item that you, that you've mentioned there, the analysis of data on calls, um, you know, and just, just speaking in my professional capacity, I think that there's lots of, lots of ways that we could do that. I mean, I think lots of people would do that for free, um, who are, so I, so I don't know exactly if we'd want to, because the, I think you originally suggested we should hire someone to do that. That's like a big cost and a long-term commitment versus committing to, sorry, versus committing to, you know, the, the process of wanting to analyze it, right? And so, so I'm just curious where, where you're on that.
My understanding is that the $10,000 that is discussed, getting allocated right now, because the, the LEAP study would include that.
Got it, got it, understood.
In terms of analysis.
Understood, yeah.
And I, I initially said, talking about, um, outsourcing that, uh, because I think that you need somebody who's experienced in data analysis and somebody who has, um, public safety, like law enforcement sort of experience.
Got it.
And finding somebody with both of those qualifications would be really challenging.
Yep, okay, awesome.
Other council members who wanted changes that we haven't specifically addressed, it might be a good, good time to address them? Councilmember Zulik?
I think we addressed a lot of my concerns, um, already through other council member comments. I do have a question on why the mayor's office is doing the elected official salary study when, um, city council is the one who does the salary appropriations? I think that's the right word.
The mayor's office is not doing a salary study, HR is.
Okay.
They did the other salary study, they pay our salaries, and it's, uh, akin to outsourcing data analysis on dispatch. You, you don't do that in-house, you get somebody professional to look at it, so we're just doing best practice on that.
Okay, I would ask that we be a part of the discussion on, on who is doing that study.
Uh, we, I hear that you are asking that. We have a price from CROW, which is like a super small little add-on, because they're already familiar with the organization, so I, they, they already were 90% of the way in analyzing all of the salaries, so, um, I'm happy to hear feedback on that, but, um, the, the price we have is very small, so, um.
Okay.
It's, they're sort of ready to go.
Uh, Councilmember Stasburg mentioned, uh, you know, some areas that might be looked at for, for cuts. The, I, I asked this, uh, during the Human Resources Department budget presentation, and that's, I think there's $15,000 set aside for an HR website overhaul, which doesn't make any sense to me, because we want an overhaul of the whole city website, which is gonna be an IT thing, so I don't really understand, you know, why there would be extra money just in the HR budget just for their website overhaul, and $15,000 is pretty substantial if they're just talking about content changes.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a complete restructure of the, my understanding, of the Intranet, uh, that employees and, and others use for knowledge base, accessing, um, benefits, et cetera, et cetera. It's extraordinarily hard to use, and, um, and we actually have a really cumbersome benefits. We have something, something along the line of 20 different benefit sources, you know, from gym reimbursement to, you know, it's, it's not all a seamless package, so that is why that's in the HR budget, uh, because it's a internal, internal-facing piece. More?
Oh, thank you, that, that helps. And I would second about the, the rebranding, I think, was it $5,000 or something for, for, no, for, um, what's it called? Like branded coffee mugs and stuff like that? What's that called? Swag? Swag? Just seems unnecessary to me.
We won't give you any swag, and we won't, we won't fund it either.
Uh, so that's, you know, since we're talking about a, a small thing like increasing the stipend of the president of council, which will not be me next year, so it's not in self-interest that I'm saying this, but, you know, something like an extra 500 bucks. Can we take it out of the swag budget? Just an idea.
I would just say, look, I think at this, at this point, we're talking about $500, and like, you know, I, I think we started the conversation talking about a $20 million gap that we wanted to fund, and now we're ending the night by talking about $500 that we're trying to find. I think that the mayor's made clear, and, you know, again, I mean, I'm biased here, because I started from the perspective of, I think this, we're already at a good place, but I'm really happy that we're making movement to get all of us on board here. I think the mayor's made clear that, that, that they're, they're working towards finding, you know, more efficiencies, and I think, I think we've also made clear where we'd like those efficiencies placed, so, so I don't know if it's worth us, you know, spending more time being like, we have an extra $500, $1,000 here. I think we can find $1,000.
Um, Councilmember Sari? I, uh, said that because I support this.
Right, right.
This thing that Councilmember Stasburg brought up.
Right.
And, um, yes, it is not a lot of money, I understand that. I'm trying to pinpoint, is it yes or no, on our priorities? It was stated as a priority by two council members, I'm just supporting that. There have certainly been things that you have said in other meetings that I thought was getting in the weeds, so.
Sure, sure.
Welcome to my weed patch. I hope they're native. Councilmember Stasburg?
To get in the weed patch about, uh, uh, elected salaries specifically, uh, I'm not sure that it has been done properly in the past, but in state code, not in theory, in state code, uh, council is supposed to set the salaries of all the elected officials in the city, and the salary ordinance for elected officials does include that stipend. So I would recommend to that kind of effect that as soon as possible, um, council members who are interested, and I will volunteer myself as interested, uh, work with our deputy attorney, our interim council attorney, to, um, craft that ordinance for elected official salaries, and then officially set elected official, elected official salaries, uh, for 2025, which would include the clerk salary, which also got mentioned as an item of concern, include the mayor's salary, include our own salaries, and include that stipend. So I think that, um, I, I think that we need to create that and then run it through the controller to make sure that the money is there as expected, and then if it's not and there's a problem, then, um, it's a different, it's a continued discussion to have somewhere else.
Can, can I just make a note? Uh, it, it is your authority to draft that. The CROW study is gonna be done in time to set the 2025 elected, the 2025 elected officials' salaries have to be done by a deadline this year, and so that study will be done in time to inform you for 2025.
Is there money, like, in your, in, in the, say, $6 million or five and a half or whatever, set aside?
Correct.
For elected official adjustments?
Correct.
Okay, great. Do you know when that study will be done?
I don't know exactly, but it's, Char's working on it.
Okay.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Let's see. I guess I wanted to first ask, just like, where, I thought, I thought someone told me that, um, Mayor Thompson, you'd, you'd, um, adjusted what we were presented to, um, now align with the, the initial council request for the sidewalk specific funding. Uh, is that right, or was, am I misinformed?
Sorry, didn't, uh, I didn't understand the question?
Sorry, the council had requested $500,000, which was an increase for sidewalk, um, infrastructure, because it'd been static for a while, and that was not in the budget that we presented last week. Did I miss it, or someone told me that, that you had changed, uh, your position on that, and now, uh, it's the amount the council requested? Is that right, or am I mis, not getting it?
I don't think we've made tangible changes to the budget this week. We were waiting for feedback and collaboration.
Okay.
And, um.
Got it, I guess that's a question, that is, is a, you know, oh, let, let me, let me back out a touch, to, to not just talk about the sidewalks, but like, more broadly, I guess, I think I share what Councilmember Stasburg, um, noted a bit ago, that I'm not, but like, I, I know we're gonna have to have, uh, bigger conversations about bonding and about multi-year bonding, and about what that looks like to meet commitments we've, we've made. I, I'm not fully comfortable with just leaving it to bonding and not having annual funding going to some types of projects, uh, in the absence of a sidewalk plan for where we're going with that. I think we need to keep funding sidewalks at, at, you know, at a, at a higher level than we have been, so that's like where the sidewalk fund piece comes in for now, which I'm in favor of getting rid of altogether eventually, but like, for now, I don't think we're there yet. And so that's one request that actually is in this budget, is the $500,000 unit funding for sidewalks in the council budget. Another is staff-led greenways and, and traffic calming projects, uh, which I noted were funded at $405,000 in 2021 by the Alternate Transportation Fund, then went to ARPA and CREED for a few years and were increased. Those funds are obviously limited, um, and then there's $0 in funding in 2025 for that. And the answer from engineering is that, due to the nature and scale of traffic calming and neighborhood greenway projects in particular, those are not good candidates for federal funding opportunities, and doesn't mean we can't bond for them, of course, but it's not the type of thing we're trying to leverage Safe Streets for all federal dollars, for instance. Um, and so that's like maybe another area where like, I think it makes sense to actually have annual funding. I don't have like, apart from the 500K figure I just gave, like, I don't have final hard numbers I would like to see. I think I do need to have more conversation with you and/or Controller McClellan about some of the, um, potential revenue sources, but I, I guess, most of that's just explaining where I am on that. I guess I'm curious to hear where you are, specific on the sidewalk thing, as well as other, you know, a, an annual city budget funding for, um, transportation safety projects.
Yeah, so we can, we can go back to the drawing board and see what we can cut and what we can't cut, and I, I just want to acknowledge that, um, we already have cut some administration priorities, and we're being asked to cut even more, and, um, collaboration frequently means that we get to a place where, um, we're all looking hard at all of our priorities. I think we've suggested some alternative funding ways for capital projects. We can look really hard at the annual budget and see, um, where we can fit some in of, um, of transportation, sidewalks, uh, greenways, et cetera. And I, I don't want to verbally commit we're gonna get $500,000 of sidewalks and greenways and, um, you know, safe streets, et cetera, um, without going back and, and, um, I would say putting pencil to paper, but really we work in spreadsheets, so, um, shifting some cells. So I don't know what we can commit to, I've heard it's a priority, I, um, I, I welcome conversation, I know, uh, I've been trying to get on your calendar, and, uh, so, um, let me know when you're ready, and we can talk about that.
Mm-hmm, sounds good.
So just to be clear, um, Controller McClellan has to submit the numbers for the civil city budget to the state on September 10th, is that correct?
It is correct, and my suggestion would be that we do, as she suggested, that we post a high number, um, slightly higher than what we anticipate we want to spend in the budget, but that we don't post, um, well beyond our means. I am, uh, as has been acknowledged, we are running a deficit budget. It's a, it's a budget that we do have to keep up with, because much of the increases are in salaries, which will then come with COLA increases in the future. I'm not comfortable, uh, creating more of a deficit in, um, in our operating budget, and I do think there are practical ways to fund some of the capital, uh, capital expenses. So I'd like to, um, to just express my principle as preparing the budget, and I'm completely open to feedback.
I have to advertise the budget by the 13th. If we don't advertise it by the 13th, we don't get a budget, and I'm not comfortable, that's why I told you the 10th, because I want all the information by the 10th, so that I have the 10th, and the 11th, and the 12th to, it is a manual process of entering everything in and making sure everything balances, I need those days, so, but it has to happen on the 13th.
Which means the 10th. It has to happen on the 10th.
I can understand that. So, to what level of detail do the number? I can understand that. So what level of detail do the numbers have to be that you post on the 13th? Like if we are still wrangling over, you know, the $150,000 extra in the sidewalk fund?
It's going to be advertised high. So it just has to have every category, personnel, you know, personnel supplies, other services, in capital in every single fund, and revenues, and all the different categories of revenue in every single fund.
Per department or just overall?
Um, per department.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Mm-hmm.
So we do, I mean, it does kind of lock us in if we want to move money from ESD to HAND or something.
It doesn't lock you in because it's advertised high and so you have wiggle room.
Councilmember Stossberg?
So basically, to say, use the sidewalk fund example, you could advertise it at 500,000, but that doesn't mean that for sure it would be 500,000. Or if you weren't sure whether something was coming out of ESD or something out of general, you could advertise it out of both and then pick one later? Is that what you mean by wiggle room?
No, I don't advertise it in two places. It's advertised high, so if you need to, kind of more like the first thing you said, if you need to shift something from one fund to another, you still have that ability.
I'll just comment and say, I think that this whole process in general should just be easier. And it's not all up to us or up to you. It also has to do with state and other guidelines. And, and I just want to apologize right now for all the people at home trying to follow this and, and going EFT, general, like what's, what's happening to CREED, bond, all the things. It's all very complicated.
Are there any final comments or questions before we wrap up? So it, it sounds to me like, oh, Councilmember Flaherty?
I, I do have a quick question that I could send, plan to send via email, but other people might find it of, of use in trying to like assess the budget. I'm, I'm looking at some of the funds, you know, that I know I mentioned and going through, okay, like, I see the summary, you know, DLGF, Form 4B, here's our, you know, cash balance, here's our expenditures, our revenues. And then I'll, you know, search the fund number and like find the places in the budget, which departments is it in, what's it doing, is that different, is it new? Do, do, is it easy, Controller McClellan, to share a, a spreadsheet, set of spreadsheets or tables that would, for each fund, I think we have, I guess, like 20, actually list just like only for that fund, like by department? You know, it'd be like a different way to present what was in the budget book, because in the budget book, it's all spread out. Each individual department has its three or four or five funds. But could you do the, you know, the, the opposite for the fund? Here are the six bud, six departmental budgets that's going to in the amount in each with, with the history? Is that easy or is that a pain?
Yeah, I can definitely do that. Each department in the fund, and I have a draft 4B already prepared for every fund. That's how we analyze the cash balance on every fund. So we have that in a spreadsheet as well. Yeah, and I can definitely provide that. If, it's easier if you pick out the funds that you're specifically interested in, because there's too many funds to, for it to be efficient to send all of them.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ah, you're welcome.
All right, any other final questions or comments? So I would just say, let's keep communicating in the next few business days with the mayor's office to follow up on the things that we would, you know, or make it or break it, items in the budget. And then we'll also, I, I think that there's a will on both sides to have a meeting pretty soon about the GEO bonds. Okay. Well, so we'll draw that part of the meeting to a close. The last item on the agenda is matters of council scheduling. We have next Wednesday on September 11th, we will have another, quote, consensus-building activity. I say that in quotes because consensus is near impossibility, but we try. And it will continue discussions about homelessness and what the city council can do in the near term and the short term. Deputy Attorney Kulak, do we have anything else for council schedule?
I think that was it, just the CBA next week.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all and good night.